And we are live.
Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome to the January twenty four, twenty twenty four Regular Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting. I'm Mike Murphy, the Chair. Tonight's Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting is brought to you courtesy of Zoom. Welcome to all, and thank you for joining us tonight. Commissioners, please have your mics on, and Deb, can you please call roll?
Thank you. And I will echo Chair Murphy's comments. Happy New Year, everyone. Okay, Chair Murphy, please.
Present.
Vice Chair Rigam.
Present.
Commissioner Akus.
Present.
Commissioner Batazzo.
Here.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Here.
Commissioner Gels.
Here.
And Commissioner Rishis.
Here.
Thank you.
For this meeting, we continue to use the Zoom platform. I will do my best to recognize you in the order in which your hands are raised. After being recognized, you may then ask your question, make your comment, or whatever. Our first item of business tonight is public appearances. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission about issues of concern. Deputy City Clerk, is there anyone who has signed up for appearances that wishes to address the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have one person signed up tonight. That's Mr. Ira Appleman.
Okay.
And if you'll give me just a moment, I will promote him to panelist.
So tonight's agenda will include remote public appearances via Zoom. Individuals wishing to address the commission may do so in person or by Zoom or telephone, provided that they register with the Deputy City Clerk by four P M. today. When it is your turn to speak, you will be called by name. Remarks must be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners or staff. Please speak audibly, state your name and city of residence for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. When your time has ended, I will thank you for your comments and move to the next speaker or item of business. Deb, please, I think Ira has been promoted as the first speaker.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Where's the clock?
Ms. Appleman, we're not as technology savvy here. You know, at the planning commission, we don't have any support staff, so.
I've found myself, okay. Ira Appleman Mercer Island. I've lived on the island over sixty years, and in the last over twenty five years, I've worked to protect parks all over the island, including Mercerdale Park, Luther Burbank Park, up and up and upper and lower, Clive's Park, et cetera. In all those battles, I've generally been fighting staff, which is the biggest threat, in my opinion, to our parks. I'd been assured that the park zone was supposed to protect our parks, but staff's version predictably attacks our parks. For example, staff is advocating a thirty five foot maximum building height in all our parks, which is prima facie crazy. The lame arguments that support this are that zones outside the town center have a thirty five foot limit, which is irrelevant, and that Luther Burbank Administrative Building would be nonconforming if we don't make it the model for all our parks. Instead of the staff version, there should be a matrix of what uses are allowed in each park. For Luther Burbank, it could say one building of twenty five foot height, or whatever the height is, but that wouldn't be allowed in the other parks. As for the sixteen park and rec issues in Exhibit Four, one through four seem fine to me. Five offices can be handled in the matrix, only allowed maybe in Luther Burbank. Six seems fine to me. Transit stops should be eliminated. They are always in the right of way, not in the parks or any place else. Eight, limiting the size of signs is probably what's important here, but that could be in the matrix for different parks. Number nine, wireless communication facilities. This should be handled park by park in the matrix. I led the fight to keep W C Fs out of Clive's Park, which succeeded. That W C F is actually in the right of way, which I argued was common law donation of land for park purposes. But at Island Crest Park, it made much more sense to put W C Fs on the light poles since they were already there, but nowhere else in the park, and we succeeded in doing that. Number ten, habitat restoration seems fine to me. Number eleven is the maximum height, which I said should be handled in the matrix. Number twelve, the city council should absolutely be involved in any increase in impervious surfaces. Even though staff says that it's unusual, I don't care. I don't trust staff in making that decision. Thirteen and fourteen standards are fine if they want to make up standards for the parks. Number fifteen, maximum development can be handled park by park in the matrix. And number sixteen, the open space trust properties should absolutely be included in the park zone. That's all I've got.
Deb, is that the only person we have?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Ira.
Thanks.
Okay, let's move on to regular business. The first item of regular business is to review and approve and consider approving the December sixth special meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
It's still moved. Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bothman and seconded by Commissioner Batazzo. Deb, can you please conduct the roll call vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Boatsman.
Aye.
Vice Chair Rigam.
Aye.
Chair Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Akus.
Aye.
Commissioner Batazzo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gels.
Aye.
And Commissioner Rishis.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. Our second and final item of regular business is the Planning Commission Agenda Bill, twenty four dash oh one Comprehensive Plan Update Park Zone First Review. Before we hear from Adam, who's primary presenter, I believe, Allison, you have a a process issue to discuss.
Yeah, thanks. Allison Van Corp, Deputy Director, I just wanted to jump in here before we get started. I have spoken to all of you in the last few days, and we've also started to see a lot of public comments coming on this issue. Kind of related to that, Adam and I checked in with our counterparts in the Park Department today, and we collectively collectively decided that it would make sense to schedule a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission to have some more dialogue about this issue. And as you all know, our schedule is super packed, so we were a little concerned about how we would fit that in, but fortunately, the Parks and Recreation Commission canceled their February meeting. So they had an opening in early February, and so we're looking at scheduling that joint session on February eighth at six P six P M. So I wanted to check in with you all and see, first of all, if that date and time could work for you. And then also just wanted to talk a little bit about how this could fit into the bigger process for reviewing the park zone. So our thought on that is that tonight, you know, we can do our initial review of the draft and of the P R C's comments. If there are items where the commission would like additional information or research, or if there's options or alternatives that you would like staff to begin drafting, you can give us that direction tonight. And then when we meet with the P R C, you'll have more opportunity to talk with them about the comments that they've provided and any additional insights that they might have. And then there'll be a little time between that meeting and our regular February meeting on February twenty eighth. And at that February twenty eighth meeting is then when we'll need to focus on making some decisions about the direction that you would like to give to staff as to how we should update the draft. So then for the the final, you know, we'll bring back a final draft based on your feedback in March for your recommendation. All right, so I'll stop there. If there's questions, I can take them, and also if we could just do like a quick thumbs up poll or something on that date of the eighth, I would appreciate it.
Okay, well, let's start there since we have some thumbs already up.
I'm giving it a tentative thumbs. Just I'm logging in here. I've got to check one thing, so.
Okay. Feel free to send me a message on email or something, too, if you need to check and let me know later.
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, here's unanimous.
Great. That's wonderful. Thanks, everybody, for being flexible. Are there? I see at least one hand there for questions.
Yeah, Carolyn.
I really feel a lot more comfortable with this approach going forward. I feel like we get a chance to, you know, learn tonight, robust discussion, learning, questions, and we also get to talk to the P R C about what's on their mind. I like it. Thank you very much for the this direction.
You're welcome.
Any other thoughts about that process or? Okay. So let's talk a little bit before we get started about the process for tonight. I know there's some concern and, and, you know, focusing on the P R C input prior to having a discussion with them may seem to be putting the cart before the horse. So then the question is, how do we want to proceed with tonight's discussion? And, you know, I mean, one approach would be to simply start going through their proposal and addressing concerns and comments and see how far we get. Carolyn.
You mean, start our work tonight with going through their proposals or do that at some point during the night?
Well, after we hear, of course, from Adam, but we would then have a chance to ask him questions, and we would start on our discussion if we have time.
You mean prioritize their recommendations prior to our discussion and learning?
Well, we're gonna be learning from them because we have a compressed schedule. Whether we'd have time tonight to actually discuss much other than questions is not clear to me, but the but I don't want to miss an opportunity to at least start the discussion of the issues. Because there are things that we're concerned about that the P R C may not be.
So, yeah, I'm really in favor of discussing what they have raised as concerns, but I just feel that as a commission, we probably need to discuss the park zone and our own thoughts and concerns about it first before getting to the P R C's concerns. So that would be my proposal is to change the order of that that discussion in our agenda. But also, I would propose that, you know, we just not take votes on their proposals tonight. Certainly discuss them, ask questions about them, but that their proposals remain in our decision matrix for our February meeting, which is at the end of the month. And take votes on them at that time when I also feel that if my own comments are due on January thirty first, I'm going to be doing a deep dive on this over the next week. And, you know, at that point, I will have the kind of knowledge to take votes on these these things.
Okay, Adam?
Um, yeah, I I I think that's, I think it's good. Yeah, let's let's definitely have our own discussion here. I wonder, and maybe the discussion will take us in that direction, but I think there's a few obvious things that we could probably come to a recommendation on the on as a commission here, and that might strengthen our discussions with the P R C also, like, hey, A, B, and C have no business being in the parks. Do you guys agree? Yeah, okay, good. So I wouldn't be afraid of making some recommendations, as I think there's some obvious, some obvious ones here. So, yeah, just just wanted to say that. And also, like, I understand there's a compressed schedule, but I think to me what's most important is getting this right, right? Our city has kind of taken taken the word of us and and the council and and the Parks Commission and given sixteen years of funding. So I understand schedules are important, but we have to do this right. So I'm I'm not going to rush it.
Victor.
Uh, I'm not gonna belabor it. I I'm gonna echo the last the last two points that were made. I'd like to see a kind of initial reaction from the commission tonight. Given the fact that we have a meeting jointly with the the P R C, I think, you know, that feels like the the right point to really synchronize or bring together their feedback and our feedback. But in terms of prioritizing tonight, I'd like to be able to get our questions answered and to get our initial feedback. I certainly have feedback.
Okay, Carolyn, is that an old hand or?
No, I just wanted to add that I can see Adam Roggeb's point on this, that since we are going to be meeting with the P R C, maybe there are a few things we'd like to go into that meeting having some, you know, a high level viewpoint on, you know, so thank you.
Okay, well, let's let's turn it over to Adam and get his Adam's act and get his input and presentation and questions we have answered, and then we'll take it from there.
Great, thank you. Let me share my screen. All right, so everybody can see that there. Let's see. So tonight we'll be talking about the the park zone here. Our purpose is really to provide you with an introduction to this initial park zone draft, and then start to get those responses to that Parks and Recreation Commission input. As per the discussion you just had, it sounds like we will hold off on responding to most of those, but I think when we get to that point in the presentation, I'll just pull up the the matrix that you had Exhibit Four of the Commission Bill, and then we can walk through each of those line items from from that real quick to give you an idea of of where you want to go in these next couple of steps. So tonight I'll start with a presentation on the background, kind of how we got to where we are and where we're going with this, and then give you an overview of the initial draft, looking at what the the different sections of the of the draft do, and then where some of those decision points are for the for the planning commission. And then, and then, like I said, I'll walk us through that matrix and look at those those comments from the P R C, and I'll also gather your your questions so that I can prepare responses for our next meeting for the February packet. So to start out with, the the park zone is it's a new zone that would regulate development in city parks. It's it was adopted, or we were we were directed to undertake this project by the city council with the Comprehensive Plan Update that we're currently currently in the process of. And and as currently drafted, the park zone would apply to our city-owned leased or managed parks. And really, the the overall idea is to ensure that development in those parks is consistent with our adopted Pro's Plan and other city plans, including the Comprehensive Plan. So you probably all know this by now, but the Growth Management Act requires us to complete our Comprehensive Plan Update by the end of of this year, by December thirty first of twenty twenty four. And so this fits within that that Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review process that we're doing. The the scope of work for that project was set by the city council in twenty twenty two and then supplemented earlier or in mid twenty twenty three. And drafting this park zone was included in that city council adopted scope of work. So that's where they directed us to to undertake this project. And being a new zone, the park zone would be adopted, excuse me, in Title nineteen of the Mercer Island City Code. And that that city code, that Title nineteen requires some specific legislative review process. So that's where we're we're working towards now. Currently, we're in the very beginning of that process, but that's the the legislative review process requires the planning commission to hold a public hearing before making a recommendation to the city council. So we're we're working through that that process that's established in the code. So for the process, there's kind of five main pieces of the process. There's the project beginning, which is the the initial drafting of of a draft for review and amendments, which the staff prepared that initial draft to kind of get the get the conversation started. And then this, the project beginning also included a Parks and Recreation Commission session where they they didn't necessarily recommend a draft, but they they did go through and they provided those comments on that that first initial draft. We are currently at the second stage of the process, the planning commission review. And this will be a series of a couple of meetings between now and and March or the end of February to arrive at at an updated draft of the park zone. And so following that, we then would take this through the rest of the Comprehensive Plan process where we would go. We're planning an open house in the spring where we would gather some comments on the draft, and then following that open house, the planning commission would hold their tune-up meeting and respond to those comments that are received at the open house, and then hold a public hearing, and then ultimately make a recommendation to the city council. And then the city council will review the draft and consider whether to adopt it. I do see a hand up there.
So I've got a couple of questions. These reviews that happen later, these, when we say P C responds to comments, P C makes a recommendation to the council, those are comprehensive plan specific, correct? They are not park zone specific.
Well, it's so you will be responding to comments on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review or the the update that we're working on, of which part of that will be this this park zone. And so the the public will be able to comment on both the park zone and the rest of the Comprehensive Plan Update. And you, during that tune-up process, the planning commission will be able to respond to all of those comments that we receive, whether they're on the park zone or on other parts of the Comprehensive Plan Update.
So I I think you have a number of members of the public on this call tonight. And I I'm I'm going to assume that they are very interested specifically in the parks proposal. And so it would be useful to understand. And apparently, apparently, this is probably under P C review that where you had that you are here thing. How many meetings are we having on the parks proposal specifically, and when are they? I understand we have a meeting tonight. We just scheduled a meeting on February eighth. What are the other meetings specifically on the parks zone proposal?
Sure. So specifically on the park zone proposal, February twenty eighth will be the next planning commission meeting. And then following that, with that input that that we receive on the twenty eighth, we'll provide an updated draft that incorporates the changes that the planning commission has proposed. And then the planning commission will review that draft at one one meeting in March. And then that would all be in advance of that open house.
Got it. So so there will be a a park-specific meeting or a park zone-specific meeting in March?
Yes.
Okay.
To review that second draft where.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. I think that is very helpful. Yeah. So moving from forward in the process, there's, I'd like to move now to kind of an overview of the park zone itself. So the park zone is composed of a few different components. The first being development regulations. So these are the sections of Title nineteen Mercer Island City Code that would regulate the development. So these are the the rules for how development may occur within that zone. As currently drafted, there would be two new code sections established to regulate development in the park zone. And we'll we'll look at each of those new code sections in a little more detail in a minute. There's also, there would be amendments to two existing sections of the city code. That'd be M I C C nineteen zero one zero four zero. That's the zone establishment section of the code. So that that section establishes each of the zones within the city. And then there's also would be some amendments to nineteen sixteen zero one zero, the definition section. And that would be to establish some new definitions for those uses and well, for the uses within the zone. There's also a zoning map included, and this would show where those development regulations would apply throughout the city. So the zoning map shows those the zones throughout the city. Of note on the zoning map, this, the current draft does not include the street end, the landings, and it does not include Aubrey Davis Park, which is within the I ninety right of way, which is owned by Wash Dot, and I'm sure we'll end up talking about that a bit. The the third component of the park zone is the land use map, and this is part of the land use element of the Comprehensive Plan. And this establishes the generalized location of future land uses, and it's based on the policies in that land use element. And it's kind of the it forms kind of the baseline from which we would derive our zoning. So we would have, we have kind of general future land use categories on the land use map that then are translated into more specific zones on the zoning map. So those are the three kind of bigger components of the park zone. Now, looking at the draft development regulations, so that first piece there, there are five pieces that we'll be taking a look at or that I'll be giving you an overview of tonight that make up those regulate regulatory changes. That's the zone establishment section, the zone purpose and designation criteria, the permitted land uses, development standards, and definitions. So we'll start with zone establishment. So this is, there are minor amendments to nineteen zero one zero four zero that are required to create a new zone. And those, the proposed amendments in this section of the code are primarily limited to just those required to establish a new zone and some other minor edits to the section just to improve the clarity there. So moving now to the new sections of the development code that are proposed, there's the park zone purpose and the park zone designation criteria. These are, these would be new sections of the code. And the purpose is really the section that that outlines why we are creating a park zone, what the what the reason for that zone is. And in in the current draft, the purpose is outlining that we're establishing these regulations for parks because their land uses are different from other zones. And it's it's really focusing on the continuation of of recreational uses in those in those parklands. So you can see the specific language of the park zone purpose in the draft. The the next section in the proposed code is the designation criteria. And these are criteria that set the rules for when those lands may be zoned parks. So when we would consider a redesignation to zone lands parks, they would need to meet the criteria that are set in this in this code section. And there are really two criteria that are proposed in the current draft, and that's that lands must be city-owned leased or managed, and that the council must make findings that that zoning is consistent with the zone purpose, which is established in the in the previous section. So those are the two designation criteria in the current draft. The third section of the park zone is is the permitted uses. And as we were, we're looking at these, some of the trade-offs with when we're considering land uses, allowed land uses. And as we were, uh, uh, we're looking at these, um, some of the trade offs with, when we're considering land uses, um, allowed land uses is ensuring that they're, you know, broad enough to, um, so that the city can do what it needs to do to maintain its parks and realize its pros plan. But then also narrow enough to preserve parks from being developed with those incompatible uses. And I think as we, as we work through the drafts of this code, um, those, those kind of competing or not competing, but those, those about, those two things will need to be balanced. And I, I think you'll, um, have some good conversations about what broad enough and narrow enough really means. Um, I think that'll be kind of the focus of, of that discussion. Um, it's, it's important as we, as we think about these land uses to keep in mind too, that any allowed land uses go through a city planning process. Um, so it, this includes, you know, setting the budget to undertake that, uh, capital improvement, putting the project onto our capital improvement plan and a design review for those, for those projects. So it, there's, there's more, more process than just the permitting process. The, um, the current drafts, um, the proposed draft has these eleven proposed land uses, uh, listed. So recreational uses, recreational facilities, agricultural activities, government offices and government services, public parking, uh, parking structures and underground parking, temporary uses and structures, transit stops, public art, signs, wireless communication facilities and utilities. Um, so as we, uh, as we work on getting to the next draft of, uh, the park zone, you, the planning commission can refine this list. Um, again, kind of near, uh, navigating that balance between broad enough and narrow enough. Um, and so if there's a, if there's a use on this list as we're considering the next, um, the next draft, if there's a use on this list that you'd like to modify or um, remove or, um, you know, provide some kind of specific, uh, conditions for, we can, we can add those into the next draft. So as you're reviewing this, this initial draft, you can consider those potential changes to um, to this list of permitted land uses. And you'll see when we get to the PRC comments that the PRC provided some input to on these permitted land uses. So I, I imagine that we will probably spend some time um, on these eleven, um, topics or permitted land uses, um, in the next stage.
Uh, Adam, Kate has a question.
Yeah, um, quick question about, um, enterprise, uh, opportunities. I know in the past there was some discussion of, um, the potential for the, I think it's the boiler rooms down by the, the new Luther Burbank docks that it used to have concessions. Um, and I know Seattle Parks actually makes quite a bit of money on, uh, enterprise uses that are beneficial to the city. Um, is, can you just give us, as we're contemplating this list? Um, uh, an update, and maybe it's not tonight on what the current thinking is at the city about, uh, enterprise. Um, I'm sure if I'm using the right word, but it's, you know, leases for services that benefit the city, but that are privately run.
Yeah, I will, um, I will address that in the next, um, kind of in more detail in, in the next memo. Um, but I think that's definitely, um, it, it's hard, it's tricky because that would vary depending on what the proposal were in terms of the, this list of, of allowed uses. That's the, that's the quick version, but there's, I, I can get into more nuance in, in a memo for you.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. And if that could cover, um, you know, I, I'm sure you will consider pros and cons, but also, um, there are a number of services that, um, uh, residents have asked for. Um, and I just want to make sure that we're not, and, and also knowing that preferences change over time. Um, you know, recreational facilities is, is pretty vague and I, I can see covers tennis courts or pickleball courts, whatever the fashion of the day is. Um, and I think some of those, some of those items would probably be of high concern if they're too vague. Um, yeah, thanks so much.
Yeah, thanks. That's a, that's a great question. So I'll make sure to address that. So moving to the next section, section four of the, um, proposed code is, um, another new section of the development code, uh, which would establish development standards for the park zone. And these development standards include like parking requirements, setbacks, the maximum height limit, um, the impervious surfaces limits, um. And they're intended to, development standards in general are intended to help reduce the impact of allowed uses on neighboring land uses and then also vice versa. So, you know, we, we establish landscaping requirements between parking areas and residential zones so that you know, there's some kind of buffer between those two uses, that, that type of thing. And, um, in the draft here, the, before you today, those standards are focused on kind of ensuring that this parks development occurs kind of consistent with our comprehensive plan and the pros plan. Uh, but there's a fair amount of, um, discretion in how we set those setbacks, um, and height standards, um, and those, those types of um, development standards. And you can see the full text of the proposed development standards on page three, line thirty seven of exhibit one. Uh, but I'll go through a quick, uh, summary of, of the, the proposed development standards, um, here. Um, so for setbacks, um, there's a, the proposed standard is that there would be no setback required between park zone um, and the public institutional zone, um, commercial and mixed use zones. And then there would be a twenty foot setback between park zone and residential zones. And, um, there would be some developments that would be exempt from those setbacks. So picnic tables, fences, gates, culverts, trails, landscaping and parking areas would all be exempt from those setbacks. In terms of the building height, uh, the maximum, the currently proposed maximum building height is a thirty five foot maximum, uh, which is approximately three stories. Um, so this would cover, um, most of the, the buildings, um, sorry, like the Luther Burbank administrative building um, and my sec would, um, both, you know, be conforming to that standard. Um, and then the impervious surfaces standard, um, is that there would be no net new impervious surfaces unless authorized by an adopted park master plan um, or an adopted city plan and the ADA plan. Um, and then, uh, in the current pro, uh, proposal, uh, emergency vehicle lanes, trails and synthetic turf, turf athletic fields would be exempt from that known net new impervious surface standard.
Zach, uh, can we interrupt you? It looks like Kate has another question. Kate, is that a new hand?
Uh, I do not show my hand up. But I'll raise and lower it.
Okay, let's go on now. No.
There we go.
Okay, never mind.
Thanks. Um, okay. So then there's a couple more development standards. Uh, there are standard, proposed standards for parking and lighting. Um, the current proposed parking standard does not establish a minimum number of parking spaces. Um, rather it, it allows the city engineer to determine, um, the necessary number of parking spaces per development. So this, uh, allows when, uh, when developing something, we can look at it more in a case by case rather than set a baseline. Um, there's also a screening requirement between parking areas and residential zones, um, that landscaping requirement. Um, and then also of note here, there's a relationship between the parking and that impervious surface standard that we were just looking at. And that that impervious surface requirement would likely limit the amount of new parking that would be, um, created unless it was already part of an adopted city plan. So that's the parking, those are the parking standards. And then the lighting standards, wait, I, actually I see a hand before I move from parking. Yeah.
Uh, so you just said something that caught my attention. You said, uh, kind of when we would be developing something in the context of parking. You can be an example of what you would be developing in our parks.
Sure. So it, if we were adding like a tennis court or a skate park or something like that, um, we could establish standards that say when you add a playground to a park, um, you know, for each square foot of, of playground, you must provide X number of parking spaces, that, that sort of thing.
But this, but the city engineer would do that, that wouldn't be done in the code.
Correct. Yeah. Rather than, rather than set a standard like that, uh, we, the current draft proposes a flexible standard where the city engineer could determine that on a case by case basis.
And, and it, and sure, Murphy, if this isn't the right time to ask questions, I, I, I'm happy to hold. Um, but I, can you just, can you give me the logic behind not specifying parking here? But we do specify it in other parts of the city for, like, for instance, the town center.
Sure. So in, in parks, I think part of the, part of the concern, well, one of the interesting things here about this zone is that it is a, an instance of the city kind of regulating itself. And so as the, the, this would, the current standard as proposed would grant the city a certain amount of flexibility in determining, so that we wouldn't end up with, um, a significant increase in parking that was set and determined in the code. Um, just because we had a ratio or required ratio. So this gives the city a little more flexibility to determine the correct amount of parking, um, per development. Because, uh, the alternative could lead to a situation where extra parking were required that maybe we didn't want to provide in our city parks.
Adam. And just to see this, this section E for minimum parking requirements, that's still subject to whatever impervious surface, um, stuff we recommend, right? Or can the city engineer overrule that?
No, it would still need to meet the impervious surface standard. Yeah. So that, that is a pretty significant, um, and as we think about impervious surface, I mean, that's a pretty significant piece of this puzzle, right?
Okay, thanks. Kate.
Yeah, I'm curious, and maybe you'll get to this later, how tree canopy fits into this equation. Um, it just, in my studies as an urban forester, um, you know, a lot of the compacted grass areas in our park are almost as impervious as concrete. And I'm wondering about how you're going to calculate known at loss. There are definitely, um, HSPF and other hydrologic models that can evaluate the impacts of different surfaces on, um, stormwater problems and, and grass falls far short of, uh, urban forest canopy. Um, um, both sparse trees and, and, and definitely, uh, natural forest condition. So I'm, I'm just curious and just putting it out there that I think this no net loss needs to include consideration of grass surfaces as well and, um, conversion to forested condition in, in the calculus. Thanks.
All right. Um, sorry, I, I didn't hear a question in there. I, I don't know. I don't want to leave you unanswered, but.
It's a comment more than a, a question.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, uh, I, missing a question. So, yeah.
I mean, I, I guess I could, I guess I could put a question and I could play Jeopardy here and say, um, what is your plan for considering, uh, grass and forest canopy? I'm personally like disappointed with how much grass we, we have and maintain in mo, particularly in areas that aren't high use. Um, it just seems like a huge wasted opportunity in a lot of areas to, uh, improve our stormwater system and take some pressure off our stormwater system by converting some lawn to urban forest. Um, I, I have been pro park zone for some time. And, uh, and that was one of the reasons I was hoping to see some really strong canopy increase, uh, goals or language in this plan, and I'm not really seeing it.
Okay. Um, so I can partially answer that question off the top here. Uh, so there's currently, uh, trees are regulated by a separate section of the code. So we have our, our tree code in chapter nineteen ten. Um, and any, any development in our city parks would have to comply with the tree code. Um, I don't have a memorized chapter verse, so, um, I, other questions about uh, the tree code would need to be held for, um, the next time. Um, but the other piece of the, the question that I heard there was about impervious surface and grass. And I would say that it would be worthwhile to look at the definition of impervious surface, um, because that tells you exactly what is counted in that known at new. Currently, grass would not be included in that definition, but there's a, a series of other things that are included in there. Um, so that might be, that might be worth, um, taking a look at. And then I, I can get into a little bit more specifics, I think. In the, in the staff report, kind of, uh, addressing that larger question about grass and canopy. Yeah. Um, so the final piece of, um, the development standards are lighting standards. Um, and these are, um, based on the International Dark Sky Association, uh, recommendations to minimize lighting impacts. Um, so, uh, we've, we've looked at lighting standards for some other uses in the past, in the recent past. Um, these would be pretty consistent with those requiring that new lighting be shielded and directed downwards, um, so that, um, to prevent the light trespass onto neighboring properties.
Victor, do you have a question?
I do. Um, do we have a sense of of the existing lighting that we have in our parks today? How much of it is compliant with what's here? And how much of it is not compliant?
Um, I don't have that ready in the hopper, but I, I could look that up for the next, the next round.
And, and I guess the follow on question to that is if it's not compliant, is that, um, does that require a retrofit? If
It would not require.
That if this is passed and it's not compliant, do we have to retrofit a bunch of stuff?
It would be non-conforming. Um, and so eventually as the, as those, that lighting was redeveloped, it would be, um, required to eventually come into conformance, um, conformity. Um, but I can, I can give you a little more information about that. Um.
Kate, do you have another question or is that still up?
Nope, it's a new one. Um, I'm, I'm curious about the downward facing lighting and whether or not, um, shorelines and salmon habitat are considered, or is that considered in another part of the code? Um, it seems like it, it appears that these impacts are generally, um, for residential uses, um, but I'm, I'm very concerned about lighting and salmon predation on the shorelines.
Mm-hmm. So that is, uh, lighting is, um, or shoreline regulations are addressed in chapter nineteen thirteen. Um, so, and I don't believe for most uses, um, there aren't specific lighting standards in the shoreline, um, but that would be a separate code amendment from the park zone. Um, so it would be handled in that chapter nineteen thirteen. And then in terms of like wetlands and, um, and stream buffers, um, those kinds of critical areas, the critical areas code is in chapter nineteen oh seven of, uh, the city code. And that also has regulations for, um, what, what can and can't happen within the buffer, um, and lighting is, um, I believe covered in some of that. Yeah. All right. So the fifth, uh, component of the park zone is amendments to Mercer Island City Code nineteen sixteen zero one zero. These would establish new definitions for terms that are used, um, in the These would establish new definitions for terms that are used um in the park zone. That are not currently defined in um the city code. Um, so those are the um nine uh definitions here, um, we can uh. We can add through your review, you can propose amendments to, um, we can, we can go through and look at uh amendments to those definitions. As we get to the second draft, um. But those are, those are the terms that are proposed for a definition. So that concludes my overs overview of the park zone, um, so those are kind of the the five areas that you can focus um. Your comments on and focus on finding those amendments that the commission would like to make, um. To the park zone, those are kind of the more consequential um pieces of this or the 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 um. The regulations for that zone, um. Now, um, kind of moving to the Parks and Recreation Commission inputs, um.
Yep, before we move on that, Adam, Kate, do you have another question?
My hand is not up. Do the thing again.
Chris, you have a question?
Yeah, this is sort of a naive question, but. The current status of the parks. Is there zoned variously? Um, but recognized as parks, but as a zoning matter, something like. You know Pioneer Park is currently zoned as, do you know what it is?
Um, I believe that's our eight point four, um, but to to answer the question, yes, all the parks. Are zoned differently, or not all of them, but many of them are zoned differently.
So as a zoning matter. If they were developed, there would be, you know, they would have the same requirements as their zone. And so the park zone as even as proposed. Substantially limits the ability to use those for other than park purposes. Uh, over what their current zoning is, now there's still a design process and a lot of other things involved, but just to the zoning matter. There is a substantial restriction on park on uses within parks because of the if we adopt the park zone. That is that right?
Correct, the the list of allowed uses in this zone is shorter than many of the other zones um it in the city. Um, I don't know that I would necessarily say that it's um. More restrictive, I think the advantage here is that the. Park zone would create a uniform set of regulations that applies in every park. Um, rather than a patchwork of several different types of regulations applying in different city parks.
Okay.
Victor.
So I I have a series of questions that I that I want to ask, and so uh what I'll do is I'll just leave my hand up and you can cycle through. I'll ask one question, then you can cycle through the other questions, um. But uh I'm gonna start with following up on Commissioner Gels's. Question and the answer. We we had Mr. Appleman um speak earlier at the beginning of the meeting and propose. Um. Let I I I I'm gonna characterize it as a tiered parks approach. Um, and it seems like you're proposing a. One size fits all approach. I'm wondering if you could just. I'd I'd love to hear your comments on on pros, cons, thoughts. Cause I, and I think. It, you know, as I'll I'll give an example, we've got Luther Burbank Park, which, you know, it it has. Nonconforming buildings, it has all kinds of stuff. Um, has government offices, and then we have Wildwood Park on the south end. Um, two very, very different parks. Um, so can you just comment on Mr. Appleman's proposal?
Sure, if the if the planning commission would like to explore um a tiered approach or uh that kind of matrix that would. Um, you know, create, uh, you know. Uh, you you could name it any kind of thing, like a tier one park is something that's over X number of acres and has these things in it. And this is what's allowed there, um, that's a, that's an approach that other jurisdictions have used, um. Where they would have like community park and then like regional park, something like that, and then have different, um. Different uses allowed there, so if if that's something that the planning commission is interested in pursuing, we could incorporate that into the second draft. But I that's uh that would be up to um. Up to the commission, yeah.
Carolyn.
Oh, okay, um. I just wanted to ask about sort of sort of our agenda this evening, so some of our commissioners are asking their questions as we go through the material. And others are kind of listening to a presentation and figuring they're gonna come back and be able to go through the whole thing. And ask their questions or, you know, promote discussion about certain things, is is that, is that the correct understanding?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thanks.
In in other words, you're not foreclosed. To comment on one of those sections or to question on one of those sections because. Adam has gone through that and Victor or someone else has asked a question about it.
Okay, well. I guess I would then then just ask, what was the understanding that we were maybe supposed to perceive that we should? Bring up all of this stuff that's on our mind as we go, or? Uh. Is it just fine to do it either way?
Well, we seem to be doing it this way to start with, because people have some preliminary questions. And we have Adam here, we have his presentation, and so I think. Uh, it's it's prudent to take the opportunity to ask questions. Uh, we're not debating uh the choice between tiered or matrix approach, the question was simply asked. Is that a possibility, so? Um. For example.
Comfortable with anything anybody's brought up, it's just that I. You know, had the understanding at the beginning that we were kind of listening to a presentation, I I'm just sort of. Holding all my stuff, just listening, you know, and so I'm hoping that we can come back because I. I just feel it'd be a little chaotic for me to try to do it some other way at this point. So.
Okay, uh, you're you're welcome to do it your way.
Um, I guess, yeah, I was kind of holding back some comments or not comments, but questions too, um. If I I guess, uh, I I I would, I would wanna rewind and ask a question about Aubrey Davis Park. Um. Why, why is it not? In our in that proposed park zone?
Sure, I will, you you asked that question too in an email, um, I'll I'll respond, it it'll be better for me to respond in a written form. Um, just because it. It's um. More complex, it's a complicated thing, uh, the short answer is that it it is in the Wash Dot right of way. Um, it's part of a larger parcel, um, and so it would probably result in a split zone, um. Which is uh another piece of that that is um maybe not. Ideal, um, but um if. There is a proposal to zone it as a park, um, we can, if that's what the planning commission wants to recommend. The planning commission can recommend that, but I'll 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 give you a longer answer in um in the matrix in response.
Okay, un-understood, although I, you know, split zone, we we saw that with the B zone, right, for um. H N T a few meetings ago, so seems like there's precedent. Already for that, where a zone doesn't line up one for one with it, so. No worries, I understand you want a a larger answer. Um, but that, yeah, that was a. I I'm sure we'll talk more later today, so.
Victor, back to you.
Uh, so I'm gonna extend. Adam's question, and so he took part of my question, my 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 additional portion of it was. Can you just explain the logic behind not including street ends and landings?
So those street ends and landings are. Primarily right of way, um, and they're not necessarily, they're rights of way that provides some park amenities. Some park-like amenities but are not necessarily specifically parks, and rights of way have specific. Things, um, specific rules governing what can take place in the right of way, um, and. So we decided to not uh propose those to be included with the um in the park zone, but it's kind of the same, the same deal. Um, it it. We can provide a little bit more information if there's more information needed, um, and the planning commission can. Um, if that's what you would like to recommend, your uh you can include that in your recommendation. But essentially, the the rights of way have their own rules that that govern them.
And and I'm I'm having a hard time seeing it on the map right now, but like, so for instance, Colkin's Landing is not a park?
Um, I don't believe Colkin's Landing is a park, there's there's one landing that is a part that is proposed to be a park. But that's because it's actually part of the park system, it's not necessarily the right way.
Uh, Adam Zach, um. Can you present next time around? Or via email, a little more detail on the pros and cons of including. The road ends into the park system. I mean, I I understand your, what you're saying is. They have different rules, but. Has rights of way, they're not necessarily very useful anymore because we don't have ferries. Um. Now, I've know that there are several where where people have access to driveways. In those locations, and so that. May complicate it, but I think it would be. A worthwhile exercise to consider the pros and cons of including them in our park system.
Yeah, I'll make sure to to write that up for um for everyone.
I just wanted to add really quick, one thing to think about there that'll be included in that analysis is that. Those street ends, you know, they are essentially a street end, and so many of them have. A lot of utility infrastructure in them, including pump stations and underground pipes, so that was part of the consideration as well, is that. Sometimes those properties are needed for utility purposes as well.
Angie, you had your hand up, did you? Not one of them?
I was actually, I had two questions that I was gonna toss in, one of them I can't find, but I think I do want to make a comment. Um, I'm gonna save Adam and Allison, and I'm gonna stick my foot in my mouth, but they're probably gonna understand why I'm doing it. Um, just because I've negotiated mitigation deals with Wash Dot through the region. As it relates to very large transportation projects, uh, it would be important for you to understand that the I ninety corridor is an open space corridor. Has a lot of strings attached related to the mitigation agreements. That Mercer Island made with Wash Dot with the state, so. Adam and Allison's ability to actually speak into that here at a recorded public meeting with all of the nuances is really challenging. Now, they can port point to a lot of different layers, but I will tell you, just based on having been a Wash Dot employee. Negotiating these and recognizing how particular the state is about making sure they have constant access. And maintenance needs to right of way, the fact that we have an open space program with a board of directors that's managing that. For our use is remarkable, given all the other examples throughout the region. And so I'm just saying now, as a planning commissioner, I'm disinclined to try and untangle that. And then I'm gonna go find my question, I'll be back later.
Okay, back to Victor.
So, um. I keep getting set up on these, uh, continuing on the open space theme. My next question is, I see a bunch of open space that is, that's got hash marks that indicates it's a park. But it doesn't say it's a park, it just says open space. So for instance, Southeast Fifty Third Place Open Space is uh or Parkwood Ridge Open Space. Is that all included in the in the parks proposal, would that, would that be part of uh what we're talking about?
Yes, those those open spaces would be included in the zone.
Yeah.
Hey.
Um. Practical question about tiered approach, um, would something like that allow us? To. Provide some of the protections we might be seeking with a park zone for. Places like street ends or Aubrey Davis or whatnot, um, but give them special dispensation for existing. Uses and agreements, um, would a tiered approach allow us some flexibility there that we could? Possibly preclude, include them in the zone and preclude. Things that are not related to um. Their current use and current um use agreements.
The tiered approach, so if we were to create, um, if the planning commission were to create, uh. Like a matrix, right, that says in these parks, these uses are allowed, and in these parks, these uses are allowed. Would allow you a lot of flexibility in determining, you know, the allowed uses in each of those like tiers. And some of that flexibility could probably be um used in a way to. Um, account for some of those existing uses in one park that you may not want to allow in another park. Um, it. The, one of the benefits of that process is that or that approach is that it would give you some that amount of flexibility. I think the the downside of that is that it becomes a lot more complicated, and so. Determine determining those those types of uses that you may want to allow in one park and not the other, um. That would be a challenging thing for the planning commission to work out, I think, but that's not a reason to not do it, that's just. That that's just one of the implications of going that route. And there's, in terms of like existing uses, there there are some options that we could look at um for existing uses. Being allowed, um, we would need to do a dive into that if that if, um. The planning commission goes in in that direction, you know.
Um, Victor, your hand's still up, so I assume you have more questions.
Yeah, I do. Um, so in the current proposal, the language around government buildings, um. And in the way that it is written about government buildings in public parks. Hypothetically speaking, with that language, would it be possible to put City Hall in Mercer Dale Park?
Uh, government offices and government services in the current draft would be allowed as a permitted use. Um, and that would include something like a city hall, um. But I think that. That's from a regulatory standpoint, and then there's. Yeah, there's also that planning piece of it, but I think you acknowledged that in the question, so I think that's one of the things that, um. You all will have to kind of weigh out the when thinking about government offices and services.
And I assume you're familiar with the history of the City Hall proposal in Mercer Dale Park.
I have, I've heard mention, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, any other questions, so I guess at this point, it would be helpful, it might be helpful to reiterate that, um, we. Are asking for written questions and comments on this first draft by uh January thirty first. Um, so that's next Wednesday, so if there's questions that you have. Um, that. If like if Commissioner Batazzo finds that written question that she may have and wants to share it, uh. We can, we can take that by uh January thirty first, um, I see Jeff has uh raised his hand, um.
Yep, just uh can everyone hear me, actually?
Yeah.
Great, thank you, uh, for the record, Jeff Thomas, uh, CPD Director. I wanted to, before the. The subject matter moves along here, um, too far, wanted to double back on just a couple of things quickly, the first thing was the. Um, the street ends, um, Allison came on screen there a few moments ago and spoke to it, I I I wanted to. Emphasize, um, these street ends are public rights of way. Um. And they have varying degrees of significant utility infrastructure. Underneath the surface, so. While we certainly use some of these areas for, uh, parks related purposes on the surface and access to the shoreline. Um. They, they can change at a moment's notice if the city needs to go in to do. Infrastructure work, that's, you know, sometimes that, those are things that need to happen quickly. Uh, to get into the ground and make repairs or do replacements. Um, it's, there are things that. Need to happen and whatever is on the surface, uh, can often disappear in. In a very short amount of time, not that it won't be replaced, but, um. The city and, you know, I think Public Works, uh, and Parks Division staff will be able to speak to this in greater detail. At your February eighth joint session with the Parks and Rec Commission, um. But, um, that's the reason why those street ends were not included in the park zone proposal. So I'll just leave it at that for the moment, and again, um, I'm sure that can get picked up on February eighth in your joint session. The second thing, um, just back to, uh, I think it was the last question there before I. Tried a few times there to come on screen, um. The City Hall, uh, question about Mercer Dale Park. Um, uh, Adam answered the question, yes, uh, from a permitted use perspective, that was correct. Uh, keep in mind, um, the impervious surface, uh, provisions that are in. Uh, the draft that's in front of you, um, would likely not permit a, a facility like that to go into that type of park. Um. When you're dealing with, um, the no net, uh, provision. You'd have to remove a lot of impervious surface and, which may not even be possible to, to build that type of facility. Provide parking forward and so forth. So I just wanted to note that for the record. And thanks for letting me interrupt.
Carolyn.
I have some miscellaneous, uh, questions to ask about the. Exhibit one. Um. On page three, where you have uses permitted listed. Um. I presume if we wanted to talk about government offices and parking. Um, it, it seems like some of. These features are being proposed to be as, at a certain level because of things we're concerned. Would become non-conforming if we didn't allow at that standard. So I presume the tiered approach would allow. For saying something different in one tier and then. Um. Having a less impactful use in some of the other parks, right?
Correct, the tiered approach would allow that, you know?
I'm, I'm sort of thinking that. I've heard enough interest in the tiered approach that it might be helpful. For our next meeting to, to see a, a draft of that. I think. You know, there's just these obvious differences between Luther Burbank and the other parks. That. You know, we could allow more impactful, when, I mean, I'm not. Looking to allow more of what's in Luther Burbank in Luther Burbank. But I'm concerned about seeing those not become non-conforming and the hassles that would come from that. So I do think the tiered approach might be quite useful, and if we could see a draft of that. Uh, it might be, might be helpful. Um, parking, uh, government offices and buildings come into question for that type of discussion. Um. So another question I have on page three is setbacks. Says, uh, zero feet if the adjacent property is one of several zones. Does that mean that the building can be built right? On the property line and, can you give me an example of the type of building we would allow to be built right to the property line?
Correct, the set, there would be no setback, uh, to the property line in that area. So, uh, for example, if you had. Um, if you were building like a restroom, um, in. And the land were adjacent to one of those zones. The rest, that restroom would be, would not be required to be set back from that property line. Um.
Okay.
All the other standards would apply.
A little hard to, uh, understand the feasibility of that, but I will think about it. Um. Okay, maximum building height on page four. Um, saying that no building shall exceed thirty-five and flagpoles, antennas, et cetera, et cetera, do not count. Toward building height in the parks zone. The way that was.
Well, Carolyn, I lost your audio.
Oh. Oh dear. Well, I'll try again. Do you hear me now?
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, I am getting a weird message here. You, you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try again. Um. The way the maximum building height, a provision is stated, it sounds like. The flagpoles, antennas, chimneys, et cetera. That you're saying would not count toward building height in the park zone, zone. Do count elsewhere. Is that correct? And why the difference?
That this would only apply in the park zone.
And, and why is that proposed? Is it because of that non-conforming issue again, maybe?
Yeah, and it, it's a standard exemption to allow those kinds of appurtenances, um, on, to not count toward the building height, so. Um. It. O- o- often a flagpole would be ex- excluded from the building height calculation.
Okay, but say, um, rooftop appurtenances, mechanical equipment, chimneys and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Those things. Do count toward building height like in residential, right?
In, in some zones, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we could, if, if the planning commission would like to amend that, you could count. You could count the rooftop appurtenances toward that, um, or mechanical equipment if, if you're concerned about that as. Part of.
I don't, I don't have a, a, an idea to amend that. I'm just trying to understand it. But in commercial areas, those things don't count toward building height? Is that kind of the way it works?
In some of our zones, they do, I believe, but I don't have them all memorized, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, let's see here. Okay, and then regarding impervious surface. It kind of seems, and I, I don't quite understand this yet, it kind of seems like we're. Trying to use impervious surface as a development control. And while I fully understand the impacts of impervious surface on natural systems and parks and so on. I'm kind of wondering, it seems like a pretty convoluted way to decide what we want to allow in our parks. Why, why is this approach being pursued?
Um, so we proposed, uh, or this, this standard was proposed as, um. For something to consider as one of the altern, or as an alternative or as an option. Um, because there is some concern about expansion of, or we've heard some concern about expansion of impervious surface. Um, certainly there are other options that we could do to control or use to control development. Um, maximum developable area or gross floor area like we use in the residential zone. Um, this is a standard that's designed to reduce impervious surface, not necessarily, or address impervious surface, not control. Um, overall development. A, a side effect of saying no net new impervious surface is that that would then control how much development is possible, yeah.
Okay.
Carolyn, let me interrupt you. You've had a few. It looks like Adam has a question. And let him jump in and then I'll come back to you.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, I guess, yeah, following up on, uh, Commissioner Boatsman's question on maximum building height. Um, we have all of these. Exceptions, um. Could we just say? You know, the existing building in, existing buildings in Luther Burbank Park are exempted. Um, from. Whatever height limit we select. Well, it would depend. We probably would need to word it differently than that.
Okay.
We could.
But I mean, that, that general theme instead of.
I think it's setting it high.
Which can allow a lot of new stuff. Let's just keep it nice and low and say existing stuff is. Excluded from this limit. Would that solve the non-conforming issue?
We could, we could look at that. I think if that's the direction that the planning commission wants to go, um, at our next, um, our next meeting in February. Um, you could provide that input and then we could develop an alternative for you to consider, um, in the second draft.
Uh, Angie.
Thanks. Um, I have a question that'll sound a little bit like a squirrel or a parking lot, but I want to bring it up. Because I think it's gonna keep coming up. Um, there have been some comments about tree canopy. And urban forestry. Um, it came up here in parks context. It came up in our economic development conversation. And I think it's going to keep coming up until it finds a home or we have. Something that's developed that people recognize as a nod to. Kind of an urban forestry plan for Mercer Island, if you will. Um. So I do want to put a plug into you, Adam and Allison about, I, I, I think we should loop back on that. Um, and figure out where that is or where that's gonna live in this comprehensive plan update, um. Because I know it's important to residents and some of the commissioners and. I feel like we need to find a home for it. I'm not sure if it's here. Like, I think there's. Um, I, when we have a intention or a purpose for a park zone to. Um. Had what was the language that we used around natural spaces? Like, I think that that talks about. Environmental management and natural space management, but I do think there's this, still this overall. Thread that I've heard in the conversations over months about. How do we as a city and as a community? Uh, manage our urban forest? So I'm just gonna make that plug for you, because I'd like to figure out explicitly where, how that's gonna live someplace.
Russ.
Yeah, I'm sort of in a bit of a dilemma. I think just going into this, I'm, I'm not quite, philosophically, I'm, feel like I'm a park protection maximalist. And project by project, I would be. Sort of inclined not to do a project, but I also feel like I'm not comfortable. With us from here, planning for the future. For city parks. The city owns this property. Um, I have to have some faith in the future design process and between the complexity. That will be in, in induced by trying to, to figure out what happens, whether it's building height or whether it's the, the grid for all the different parks. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of drawn a little bit to the, the, I think the staff proposal that. You know, let's have a, a pretty broad template at the zoning level. Recognizing that a lot of these battles will be fought out at the design level. Um, but, you know, I'm, I'm learning, so, uh, I'm open minded, but I think I just wanted to. I think that tension is there to some extent, and I just wanted to, uh, flag it.
Adam.
Um, I guess I'll respond to Commissioner Batazzo and Commissioner Goals' previous comments. I think I. I, I agree with Commissioner Batazzo and previously Commissioner Accuse, and I think I've already submitted a written comment. Um, yeah, I'd love to see something talking about maintain or expand tree canopy. Um, in this new zone, so yeah, that, you got a third vote there. Um, if we, if someone puts forth a motion, um. As regards Commissioner Goals' comments, I'm, I would be very reluctant to. Um, I don't know if it's necessarily trusting the city. But. You know, we start putting something in here saying underground parking garage or multi-story parking garage and. You know, if I put a developer hat on, I see, oh, wow, they've just laid out. A nice little profit opportunity for me, um, on public land, so I, I think it goes a little beyond just trusting the city. Um, if we list something here that could inspire new projects, um, so. Whether we talk later today or in our next two meetings on this, I'm gonna be. Throwing some suggestions out to trim a lot of those, um, permitted uses. Including, uh, those parks.
Victor.
Uh, plus one to Adam, a response to Commissioner Gels. Well, well, I think the trust in the. City is admirable. If you look down at the participants in the Zoom meeting. You'll see that we have one of the highest participation rates in our, uh, planning commission meeting that I've seen since I've been here. Um, a lot of people are interested in this, and the reason that there's a lot of people that are interested in it is that there is a long fifty-year history. Of the city encroaching on our parks. And unfortunately, um. While I would love to give the city the benefit of the doubt. Uh, I. Don't trust them to do that, and I'd like to put guardrails around this, uh, pretty, uh. Uh. Pretty strictly, um, so that we can preserve our parks.
Uh, Carolyn, I'm gonna come back to you, but, uh, before we do that, I have a kind of a. Related question to the discussion we've had here that ties back to the. Impervious surface, uh, discussion. Uh, and, and Jeff's comments, um. It says no net new impervious surface. Is permitted unless it has been authorized by an adopted park master plan. The city of Mercer Island ADA plan or specifically exempted by this section. I'm curious about. What? Constitutes authorized by an adopted park master plan. Um. You know, is that something that the? City council, for example, could decide that they're gonna do a master plan for. Mercer Dale Park, including a new city hall. And thereby exempt the impervious surface, uh, limitation that Jeff said would be a barrier to that.
So the city council, uh, does have the authority to adopt park master plans. Um, and can adopt a, a master plan. Um, I see Jeff just jumped on the, um, jumped on the call here, so maybe I'll. Defer to him if he wants to respond.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, well, I felt obligated, given that I was the one that brought it up, so, um. Chair Murphy, um, there, I, I don't, I believe there's only a few parks master plans that have been. Formally adopted by city council. Um. The, your, your theoretical question, I. Could perhaps, uh, come to fruition. If the council was to do a master plan for a specific park and. Um. Decided to put X, Y, or Z within the park, so. Uh. So, yeah, so your, yes, is the answer to that question that you asked. Um. A parks master plan, uh, is. It's a fairly extensive process, uh, including public participation, um. Council, Parks Commission, and so forth. So, yes, i- i- it could theoretically happen, is the answer to your question.
Yeah.
Carolyn.
Um. It's been my understanding before, and I'm a little surprised to hear it, that even the open space conservancy can be reversed by the council. Isn't that correct?
The Open Space Conservancy Trust was created by the city council, um, yes.
And it can be uncreated, right? I mean, it doesn't provide permanent protection for those lands, doesn't it? Does it? I just want, I mean, I'm, I'm not. Complaining, I'm just wanna understand the reality of the situation.
I think, um, that's a good question, uh, not one that I have an absolute answer for you, yes or no on. That's something I think we would want to. Fact check, and we can certainly come back to the commission with that answer.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions before, uh? Adam Zach moves on to the next part of his. Oh, Carolyn?
Yeah, I've got some more questions, uh, okay, about exhibit one. Um, under lighting, Zach, um. Has, uh, color or lumens been considered in the lighting considerations that are allowed in parks?
Uh, it is not included in, uh, the current draft. Um, except for lighting below two hundred lumens is, is allowed, um, provided it's lighting a pathway.
Right, okay, okay. Um, and then you, it says here, lighting required by state or federal law. What kind of lighting would the, the government be requiring in that regard?
Well, so that would, that would be for like, uh, typically that's for like safety, so, or if, um, if they were working on, uh. Um, like a s. Uh, project that, like a federally funded project that had to have some kind of lighting. Um, those, those types of, uh, those types of lighting, yeah.
Okay, just project oriented stuff then, okay. Um, I wanted to ask about the definitions of farmer's market. So, I think, um. Right now, our farmer's market takes place in a street. But this definition would have it. I guess being allowed in parks. So that's kind of a chain from. So that's kind of a chain from the status quo. Do I understand that correctly?
Uh, correct. This is, this is specifically to allow farmers markets in the parks.
Okay. Um, and then on definitions of park and recreational uses, I just want to comment that I think the word environmental is kind of vague to be used to describe a use. So I kind of put my head to that a little bit and see if I can suggest a different term for that. And then last on, um, definition of temporary structures. So what would be an example of a temporary use that would go as on as long as 180 days, in your view?
Um, that could be something like, um, I don't know, uh, um, like farm stands. Um, we wouldn't have those in Mercer Island, but like a farm stand is sometimes a temporary use that happens through the, the growing season, um, for up to six months. Uh, but typically 180 days is the point at which, um, in, usually in the building code where that would then become a permanent structure. Um, so that, that's kind of the benchmark used.
And then I also have a question about the land use map.
Okay.
So I'm looking at the map and I'm looking at the key and trying to line up the colors and the places where the park zone would be. So I see that the park zone, um, well, I can't line up the colors is one thing, but I see at the, at the north end of Mercer Island, north of 90, there's an area that is currently dark gray and buff, which is shown as park zone, which apparently is something else right now. I guess, could you explain what that, that is?
Sure. So on the current land use map, um, that is a combination of public facility and single family, um, designation. And that is the, that parcel with the hashing is the MISEC parcel. Um, so on the land use map, that wasn't included, that was designated as public facility.
Okay.
It would go to park.
Okay. And then there's another one, south of 90 east, um, that is currently multifamily that is shown as park. What's that?
Uh, that is the Gallagher Hill Open Space.
Hmm. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Adam.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll second Commissioner Boatsman on some of the colors. I, I have some, some, had some difficulty there, like, um, yeah, differentiating between open space and commercial office on, on that land use map. Um, and then I guess I'd like to rewind also to farmer's market. So my, you know, I've, I've been to the farmer's market, it's held on the street right now. Um, was there any public input or city council direction to pave the way, uh, no pun intended, for putting a farmer's market in the parks, presumably in Mercerdale?
Uh, no, it, that, that was included as, uh, because we were talking about temporary uses being an allowed use, um, and it seemed reasonable to assume that a farmer's market, uh, may take place in a park. But again, if the planning commission would like to amend the draft to remove farmer's market specifically, uh, we wouldn't even need to then adopt a, a definition for it.
Okay, yeah, just kind of was like wondering where did that come from? Um, so, okay, understanding, understood, thanks.
Carolyn, is that a new hand or?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Adam, forward ahead with your next, your presentation.
Thanks. Um, those are really, really great questions. I'm looking forward to seeing what, uh, written questions come in next. I think that'll be helpful for the group, um, as we move forward here. Um, let me share my screen, I'll, I'll put up the, um, Parks and Recreation Commission comments. I think we can get through these relatively quickly because we've already kind of touched on a couple of the ideas here, so. Um, and again, tonight, we're, we're looking for, um, if there are those things that are simple, um, that you feel comfortable responding to tonight, um, we can, we can do that by consensus, or if we want to hold off until, um, after the February 8th meeting, we can do that as well. Um, I just want to kind of point, point out again that we're, we're shooting for getting this wrapped, uh, or getting ready to, um, getting through this input, um, so that we can produce a second draft, um, after this, after this February 28th meeting. So, um, with that, uh, we'll look at the first, uh, three comments, uh, from the PRC, uh, address the park zone, um, purpose, which is that first section of the new proposed park zone regulations. Um, and these are, um, probably one of the easier, um, these are it possibly a lower hanging fruit um, to decide on, um, basically differentiating this zone from, uh, other zones by an emphasis on recreation, um, separating out number three from the other concepts. So that would, um, be separating out kind of recreation from, um, some of the other, um, things that go on in parks and strengthening that, um, the idea of, um, how it addresses recreation in the, in the park zone purpose. The fourth comment is, uh, to consider adding conditions to the recreational uses or facilities to clarify what constitutes that use, and then possibly dropping private from the definition of recreational facilities. Um, so those-
Carolyn, do you have a question?
I don't know, I'm sort of thinking that this time, maybe we should make it clear that we should talk as we go, because otherwise it sounds like Adam's going to run through the whole thing, and then we're going to double back. So how about we deal with number one, two, and three before we go into number four?
That sounds, that would work for me.
Okay. All right.
Any objections then? Angie?
Uh, I just want to understand when you say, let's deal with it. Is by that, do you just mean we're having a dialogue and discussion now? Because my understanding coming into the meeting was we're not going to vote on anything, we're just going to have a dialogue and discuss.
Yeah, I'm talking about dialogue and discuss. Like, I'd like to try to understand number one better, for example, while we're on it. And, uh, you know, have a comment about number three and so on. So I, I think it'd be useful to kind of do instead of, you know, coming back later. That's all I mean.
Okay. Russ?
Yeah, I actually like the idea of differentiating the zone by saying something to affect that recreation is the paramount use of the park zone. You know, something from my point of view, that if there's design decisions made in the future, there'll be a standard of which to hold it and is headed, is it really, you know, forwarding the purpose of the zone, which is, which is recreation? But I, I think there's something about just having recreation listed first that doesn't, seems inadequate for the, for the importance of the recreational use in, in the context of the park zone.
Angie, do you have further comment, or is that an old hand?
No, I, I think I would just weigh in and indicate that, there's a longstanding history in the United States as it relates to public space and land management about the distinctions between when we are managing lands for the conservation of something and when we're managing lands for the recreation of something. And I think it does make a pretty big distinction for us that I would like to have a conversation with the Parks Group about, because they seem pretty bent on, based on their comments, emphasizing recreation. Um, and I do wonder about those times and situations when we have a park that's a park, but its emphasis isn't on recreation as the lead. Um, and so, um, you know, maybe that's for a tiered conversation, but I think I am flagging that as, uh, wait a minute, I don't think it's always for recreation, and recreation does get in conflict with other reasonable park land management strategies.
Victor.
I'll just, uh, give a plus one to Commissioner Batazzo's comments. Again, I, I think that, I, I'm not, I, I don't think we're going to solve it here, but I do, I do think that it, it begs for at least an exploration of, of the tiered approach, because certainly what you can do in Luther Burbank is certainly much different than what you can do in our smaller parks, and it's not a one size fits all.
Hey.
Uh, my slight nuance on that is that if we have any properties that were purchased with special bonds or whatnot, we're going to have large tracts of land that have restrictions, like you can't have recreation use, or you must allow recreation uses. So we're going to need an analysis, um, from staff on any, um, conditions that are attached to the deeds on our land based on where the funding for purchasing that land came from. So I, I, I guess by saying that, I'm saying I don't see how we do this without a tiered approach that reflects, um, the requirements of the titles of, that are, you know, bound to the titles of the properties based on funding.
Carolyn.
I'm not entirely sure what they're getting at at number one to, I, to clarify that active and passive recreation are included. But I guess these comments they're making are basically towards what's written in our draft. So when I look at our draft, I mean, I, it possibly can be approved, but the only thing I see here that they mentioned in number one, two, and three is to maybe separate out recreation and make that, you know, A4 or something. They seem to want to not have it included with urban forests, critical habitat, and environmental resources. And that can make some sense, might make the, the regulations, you know, more clear. But I don't agree with their emphasis. Let's see. Consider, well, I didn't differentiate. I, I don't agree with the idea of emphasizing recreation for the park zone. I, I don't think that's really correct at all, so. Okay, so I think we can improve the language of the code. I don't agree with their emphasis, a greater emphasis on recreation.
Hey, do you have another question or comment? Okay, Angie?
Um, I do have a comment, but I want to ask a question of Adam real quickly. Adam, if I wanted to, can I rent space at a park to get married?
Good question. Um, that would be a good question for the Parks Staff, um, at, on February 8th. I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Okay, because typically something is allowed in some form or another. It just depends, it's the park, the jurisdiction, yada, yada. However, if I'm allowed to get married at Luther Burbank Park and I pay a fee to use the park consistent with park rules, oftentimes they let us to put up things like tents that are temporary in nature, but it allows me to cover my wedding. That would be private in nature. And oftentimes when park codes or whatnot, uh, refer to private, uh, stuff in parks, it means that temporary private use nature, like I set up a tent in a park to have a wedding and I'll take it down tomorrow, but not everyone is invited. So I, I'm flagging that in number four as, uh, the way it's written, I'm not sure I would be inclined to eliminate it because it's allowing for that kind of use, if you will. So I'm just making that comment.
Russ?
Yeah, you know, I take Angie's point about the, uh, conservation being important in parks. And, you know, now I noticed that it's not listed under permitted uses. And is that because it's sort of the default? Is that sort of lack of use is what the conservation, you know, use is? Adam, I, I guess that was my question.
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, we'll, we'll get to, I think it's number five here, um. No, it's further down, but, uh, one of their comments was that we could add in a use that kind of addresses that, um, to more, be more affirmative. But yeah, I mean, generally a passive use of the land doesn't-
Lack of use is conservation, right?
Right.
Carolyn.
Um, regard, following up on that, you know, I was thinking about the same thing earlier, but I was kind of understanding this code to be about development. What's allowed that is development, rather than defining all the different things we might do in parks. So I don't, I don't know if I'm uncomfortable with the, you know, the, the gist of it at the way it is. You're talking about number four here from PRC. Don't understand what they mean when they say possibly drop private from the definition of recreational facilities. Oh, oh, I see, it does, it does say private. Okay, I was, I was, hadn't found that before. Um, never mind on that one.
Okay, before we move on, we've been going for almost two hours. So let's take a 10-minute break and, uh, then resume with, uh, page two of exhibit four. Okay, Adam, are you ready to resume? Uh Carolyn, is that a hand up or not?
Oh. No.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, we'll pick us where we left off.
Is Deb there?
Deb is here.
Okay.
Never fear.
Okay, so picking back up at uh P R C input uh log number five, um this is page two of exhibit four. I think I can just we'll just use this to keep track of. I don't need to give a a summary if if you've already had a chance to read it.
Yeah. Uh, Adam.
I'd I mean, I'd like to see this trimmed down significantly to read something to the tune of existing or pre-existing city services. Um, I think we're opening the door for way too much here as currently worded.
Victor.
I'll go further. Um, I'd like to see this section eliminated. Acknowledge that there are government buildings in uh Luther Burbank. Um, those predate the park. Uh, those have been there well before it was ever a park. Uh, but I think uh the public would like an uh would like some assurances that there will be no additional government buildings. And I'll say that both Adam's response as well as Jeff's response to my question about City Hall and Mercerdale Park wasn't exactly reassuring.
Carolyn.
What is considered to be services, Adam?
Government services are, um, let me get my definition here. Sorry, just a moment here. So let me share the definition with you. So this is the definition. This is the existing definition of government services in nineteen sixteen zero one zero.
Okay, well, a lot of those things would involve an office, I guess, or a building, but some of them might not. But in any case, this seems to be another aspect of our draft that might be trying to accommodate what's in Luther Burbank Park. So again, um, a tiered approach seems to be a way to deal with this suggestion that they have, which I think is, you know, it's in the right direction, but maybe needs to be taken a little farther um consistent with what's some of the commissioners have already said.
Kate.
Yeah, I'm I'm curious about as as someone who's worked for a parks department. You know, we we do have a a very demanding community and we do have need of maintenance facilities. We also know that the needs can change over time and uses can change over time. Um, preferred activities can change over time. So while I appreciate the spirit of not wanting to have like giant new institutional buildings on parks, I'm wondering if maybe it's not a definitions issue because I would not want to preclude needed maintenance facilities. From parks, that just seems a little um over the top to me. But I wonder if there's a splitting or or a way to say you know, parks of a certain size can have maintenance facilities. I I I feel like the city doesn't want to give up too much of its right to be able to do its job. Um, but again, understanding they need to not want to have massive buildings.
A good idea.
I think there's also a um a question of where where those may may not be appropriate and and perhaps the tiered approach could address that. Thinking of like Mercerdale Park and the the whatchamacallit uh the farmer's market, you know, they need storage facilities for that. They need to place the park maintenance vehicles for that. They need to they need to be able to bring tables and other garbage cans and things in and out for that activity. So there might be a handful of parks where we say maintenance facilities, um, storage facilities are allowed.
Angie.
Um, I think I'm gonna say something that's gonna be very unpopular with many, but I'm gonna say it. I agree with Kate in the need to, I feel like we need to make sure the city can do its job. Um, I have heard a lot of sentiment, both written in comments and certainly on this planning commission about a lack of trust in the city to do its job, which I think probably needs some kind of resolution in and of itself. But if I'm not doing my job as a commissioner to help outfit the city with the resources they need to do their job, it makes it hard. And based on what I've been seeing over months and years of paying attention, it's already a hard job. Eliminating their ability to use the lands that they do have to manage or maintain those spaces. Um, like that that just makes a hard job already harder. I've been sitting on this commission long enough to hear people talk about the lack of space, the lack of parking, the lack of places to do the things we need to do. And I think that if we continue to narrow down and drill down into that, we're just not gonna have any room to move around and and it's gonna come to a more painful head. That said, I recognize that compromise, like I've heard the fight that clearly has been going on for time uh to make sure that we have good park spaces and that there is access to that. Um, and and I recognize the importance of of being able to balance maintenance and preservation. But I'm just not willing to completely hamstring what seems like an already very hamstrung city. And you know, ditto that for the parking piece. Actually, I there's some places about like, no, we can't make more parking where I'm like, mm, now we have to get creative about parking. Like, I'm really gonna press us on. We're gonna need to get creative about parking and creating and managing and maintaining and um, and so I'm disinclined to take things off the table that might actually be uh interesting and innovative. And so I'm just, I'm just gonna let you know that. That's for discussion since we're discussing and debating.
Victor.
Just a clarification. So my my comment was around the elimination of this section, not the elimination of government buildings. I acknowledge that there are buildings, a a lot of government buildings that need to remain and serve a useful purpose in in Luther Burbank, and I would expect those to remain. Uh, but I view this uh this section as being uh additive to what's already there. And that's the portion that I don't support.
Kate.
Um, just acknowledging that I I feel like I need to after this discussion, reread and do a much deeper dive to to form comments. I think there's a lot of nuance to this and also I'm sorry if this is like really way too specific, but um I'm thinking of like the dog wash at Marymore Park and how much money that makes and what an amazing and wonderful service that is and how much how many people own dogs on Mercer Island and how thrilled we'd be to have something like that locally. I just wanted to like put that be in people's bonnets that there are some and whether or not you think that's a good idea, like there are some amenities that are enterprise amenities that that parks can have that we don't currently have that can make us money to help fund our parks that don't have massive impacts, but um have huge benefits to the community. So I I I know, like, I I so much want to um have more trees and I want to protect um protecting so massive buildings don't get placed on them, but I I don't want us to lose the ability to think creatively about enterprise and new uses, things that things that can be useful to us. Let's not be so like jaded about past decisions that we draw up throw out any opportunity for innovation. There's a balance, I guess, is what my comment is.
Yes, I think the other point to add to that is that we don't know what might be something people perceive as useful or necessary twenty years from now. So that flexibility is is important um and not to be overly restrictive. You know, I think there's a consensus I'm hearing of the group is we're very concerned about kind of the big issues uh and the big things that might be done wrong. But I think there may be a sentiment that there needs to be flexibility to do uh not just small things, but some things that provide better access, et cetera. Uh, and so we so that may be another way to be thinking about these issues um along with the tiered approach discussed earlier. Uh, Adam.
I'm uh like I I've heard it now twice, and I'm I'm quite concerned by this theme of trying to monetize our parks. I mean, that that's what bonds are for, right? Though that's millions of dollars. I just that that sounds like just such a ludicrous idea. You know, I've seen it done, but I mean, monetizing purely to fund the parks, I mean.
Yes, state your point of order.
Um, we're we're not meant to insult each other's ideas with terms like ludicrous. That's just a point of order chair.
I think that's well taken. Adam, you wanna rephrase that?
I am strongly against any ideas of trying to monetize our parks. Uh, the the purpose, my understanding of this zone is to protect and preserve the parks, not to try to fill very small gaps in a budget. Where we're not here to balance budgets. And yeah, apologies for the strong emotions on protecting our parks.
Carolyn.
Um, I also would not want to see the use of parks to make money. But I can see possibly some commercial uses, for example, a small craft, you know, that could be rented, that might be a contract with a commercial operator or, you know.
A contract with a commercial operator or, you know, the concessions idea, I'm not quite sure about that, but. That's, those are two different ways of considering. Um, you know, commercial activities or or money-making activities in the park. But I have a comment about number six, but I'll I'll wait on that.
Uh, Adam, uh, Zach, I have a question for you on this uh, issue of money. Um, you know, I assume that uh, the baseball leagues and others pay for the use of the park system. Uh, do we have any? Handle on what that amounts to and kind of what rough roughly what the scope of that is and who pays and where that money goes.
Um, I I don't have that information ready um, at the moment, but that. Uh, on the eighth during the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, that would be a great question to ask our park staff. Um, and then if we, if that question's still hanging out, we can address it in the February packet.
Okay, thanks. Okay, forge ahead.
Okay, so that was number five. I think we're on to number six here.
Okay, uh, I think I saw Victor's first.
So, I think there was a comment in the P R C. About uh, that I don't see captured here about uh, changing the language here. To be. Surface or street parking. The idea of underground parking or parking structures in our parks. Um, is. Offensive. It's even more offensive, given the fact that we're trying. Desperately to eliminate parking in our town center and with every development, we eliminate parking. But for some reason, we we seem to want to increase parking here. Uh, so I would advocate for changing this and being very explicit about. Uh, surface or street parking, which I think was good feedback from the P R C.
Um, I wanted to see if I could get at what they were trying to suggest here, so um. Consider revising public parking to simply state public parking. I think that's supposed to say consider revising. E, parking. To pub, and they want to change that to public parking? Do you think that's what they mean, Adam?
Um, I I think that that's, yeah, that was a typo, I think here.
So they they want to change all of section E to public parking and. I mean, I, seems like a reasonably good idea, uh. Well, public parking, yeah, um, maybe they're trying to, are they concerned about? That the city would somehow. Rent out parking spaces to people or something? What what did, what prompted this suggestion here? Do you know?
Um, I don't know, that would be a good question to ask the P R C at the joint meeting on the eighth.
Okay, and then the other thing they say to link it with recreational uses. So I guess they're saying. I'm trying to think of uses of our parking areas and parks that would not be recreational. If somebody parked their car there and go to work or. Um, what, I I just don't understand what they're getting at here. You know?
Well, there's, there's a couple of, uh, again, I I'm not gonna speak for the P R C, but there there are some ways that you could get at. Keeping parking uh. Limited to those things with recrea- or being accessory to recreational uses or an allowed use would be another option. Um, so we could, we could look at those in the next draft, but I think you can get more clarification on the eighth.
And then, and then when they say recreation, then that starts bringing in again the narrowness of the word recreation in terms of, you know, what what goes on in parks, but. Um, I'm not uncomfortable with using the same definition for parking that's used in the rest of the city. I'd be pretty rare that we would ever have any underground parking, but. I don't think we need a separate definition for the parks, that would be my thought on that.
Um, yeah, I I'm in support of the. I think it, per per my written comments, the like at grade or street level. Um, and directly supporting park use to prevent. Any pressure or ideas to add parking. You know, to supplement town center or to support a park and ride, um. So, yeah.
That's interesting, I, you know, I was thinking surface parking should be, uh, you know, as as Adam just described, uh, park use related. But I, you know, I was sort of more open in my mind to underground parking even more broadly if, you know, if we needed it for some reason or another. I was sort of curious what uh, why is that such a off limits other, is it philosophic or is there some practical problem? In terms of us take Mercer Dale, using Mercer Dale, if there was a an entrance that went underground and people parked under there.
Victor, Adam, do you have any thoughts on that, responding to Chris?
Uh, I'm I'm happy to respond. I I I'll again say what I've said in previous meetings. Parks are the third rail of Mercer Island politics. Underground parking at Mercer Dale or anywhere else involves getting a bulldozer and digging deep. Uh, and 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 changing, changing that park significantly. My contacts and and kind of my ear to the ground on this, as well as my own feeling is. People are uninterested in that.
Uh, I think there's. A couple of different camps. I think there are definitely people not interested in that and and I do think there are people who are. You know, I've had conversations with folks who are like, well, you know, it'd be great if we could do something even more. Active or even more like, there's a lot of creative ideas out there and I actually. You know, Victor Steinbrook Park in Seattle is a park on top of a parking garage, um, it actually makes that parking garage. Not nearly as abominable because we got something cool on top of it adjacent to Pipe Place Market. Uh, given that town center is continually constricted, just making sure we don't limit ourselves, I think you can put a big field. Back on top of something. I think it's a possibility. And I think it's important to leave some possibilities open for conversation and discussion, even though I recognize that. I probably just derailed the third rail in some way, um, I think it's, I think it's important to be able to continue to have the conversation. So that we can all have what we need and want, and there's a lot of needs and wants and limited availability to meet that. I like it, I like the idea in some ways of being able to have increased parking. If I think about people's use of parking too, like and of parks, like. To increase capacity of a park to receive people and visitors if we're having more use of it. Like where are we gonna put people and still be able to access business or access neighbors and neighborhoods without. Constricting that, I think it's gonna require us um, to get creative and compromise.
Um, thank you Chair, um. I, I think part of the parking issue has to be a discussion of ADA issues. And um, we don't have adequate accessible parking in our parks, so. I think we need to manage this one carefully, um. We don't have accessible parks generally, a lot of our parks require um. Being able-bodied to get into them and to use many of their facilities and functions. Um, so I think ADA issues are important here. Um, I also wanna. You know, for what Angie's saying and just some earlier discussion about um. Recreation and enterprise, if you look at our budget. One point three four million dollars of the twenty twenty-three budget came from recreation programs. That is a significant amount of the city budget. Total city budget is thirty-four million, property taxes are thirteen-five. So our recreation programs are ten percent of our property tax budget. Our business and utility taxes are five million, so recreation programs are. Uh, maybe ju- just over twenty percent relative to business and utility taxes. That is not a small amount of money in the city budget. And um, I just wanted to revisit that issue. Everyone in this group is taking time out of their day. Because they care about our city and because they're very passionate about parks and they're very passionate about the uses, so. I'm just gonna reiterate, we need to talk about these things using um. Facts, acknowledging that this is a a hot topic, let's use facts, um. And 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 really just stick to that when we're talking about dollars and cents and park uses. Um, there's a a ton of park space that is used for sports fields. And that is a money-generated enterprise for our city, a significant one. So let's get real, let's use facts in these discussions, um, it's gonna get hot, it's gonna get heated, um. Uh, let's, let's be kind about it, thanks.
Victor.
So, uh, partially in response to uh, Angie's, Angie's comments. Earlier, you mentioned trust. There's a huge trust issue here. Uh, there's a fifty-year trust issue here. Uh, there. Pioneer Park was supposed to be redeveloped as a golf course. As I alluded to earlier. Uh, there was a proposal to put. City Hall and the Fire Department in Mercer Dale Park. Uh, there was going to be a transit. Parking, I believe, on Kite Hill. Uh, more recently, and more recently, there was also talk of a a thrift shop sorting center within Mercer Dale Park. Um, there is a long history of breach of trust and encroachment on our parks. Um, I would say fix the trust issue first and then we can talk about. Uh, being more flexible about our parks. But right now, people feel like our parks are threatened, which is actually the genesis of this discussion. And why the city council asked staff to come up with a park zone. Which is, they wanted the parks protected.
Okay, any further comments? Adam.
Uh, I like Commissioner Batazzo's description of a parking garage, uh, where she used the word abominable.
So I think the next item that we're looking at is seven. The transit stops issue, and I have a question for you, Adam, Zach. What's the difference between a bus stop and a transit stop?
Uh, there would be a semantic difference, a bus stop is a transit stop, so we could define it. Differently if the planning commission wanted, um, but uh, uh, under the current definition, it would be a bus stop would be a transit stop.
And isn't it the, I think Ira Appleman was probably correct, uh, in stating that most of the bus stops. Are in the right way, aren't they?
M- most of them are, yes. Probably all existing ones, but are close to it, yeah.
So what? What's the purpose of? Including this as a, in there?
Well, if there were something, like if you wanted to add a bus stop. Say at the entrance to a community center or i- i- inside a park somewhere that's not in the right way, this would allow it.
Uh, Victor.
Uh, a comment and a question, um, so can you tell me the difference between a transit stop and a transit facility?
Yes, a transit stop is a single stop along, fixed stop along a a route. Um, that doesn't include additional, um. Uh, additional uh, development, so doesn't include uh, parking or vehicle storage, um. But uh, in the current definitions, a transit stop would be a transit facility, but a transit facility is broader than a transit stop, which is more specific.
And what's being proposed here, a transit facility or a transit stop?
Transit stop is the proposed use in the draft.
So I'm, I, and it's cut off on the screen, but a transit facility, it says a transit. Facility?
Transit facility located at selected points along transit routes for passenger pickup, drop-off or transfer. But excluding areas for vehicle repair or storage, parking lots, transfer stations and park and ride stations.
It sounds to me that a transit facility is being proposed here.
The proposed use in the draft is to allow a transit stop.
But the words on the screen are transit facility.
Here, I can show you the draft, that maybe that'll help clear it up. Um, okay, pull that up here. And again, as I'm pulling this up, these are the types of things we can uh, amend the allowed uses. Um, as the, as the planning commission would like, or see fit. So the use is permitted here is a transit stop. Um, that doesn't say transit facility, um, allowing those kind of bigger, um.
And and to Chair Murphy's earlier comment. Those current, there's not a transit stop in a park currently, is that right?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay, so I don't actually understand why we have that section there. And I'm not supportive of.
Uh, Alan.
Um, yeah, I'll echo, uh. Commissioner Shes's comment that I'm not supportive of that either, I mean, we have. We have, referring back to my written comments, we have transit stops. In single-family residential and multifamily zones and those are not listed as allowed uses yet. They still work presumably because they're within the right of way, so. Let's, let's, let's keep, let's keep the bus stops at within the right of way. Um, I, yeah, I I can't put my name on anything saying. Putting that, putting that in a park.
Uh, Andy.
Um, in considering uh, a number of things, including. As we grow and as hopefully transit becomes a bigger player in the way humans move around. And transit is currently a major source of moving, um, people with disabilities or those other than able-bodied, including able-bodied. Allowing for a transit stop inside of a park does allow for tran- better transit access for those other than able-bodied. Um, and it can in fact save money and reduce our need to make our right-of-way. Uh, at more accessible, which is one of the challenges all jurisdictions have, like how accessible are our public spaces? Uh, more and more, you're going to feel and see the need to increase accessibility for multiple people in public spaces. And the ability to serve transit inside of a parking lot, for example, that has increased access for wheelchairs. Or cane rails or whatnot, um. Can can be and will be more important in the future than I think we might realize.
Uh, I'm wondering if we could get like a a thumbs up, thumbs down on. Uh, a transit item related to accessibility. Or eighty, meeting gaps in ADA as opposed to just as broad, open-ended transit item. Um, I'm just wondering what the um, appetite is in the group for supporting ADA issues, um. Versus just a a a blanket transit statement, because I think that's important, I think a couple of other people have mentioned that it's important as well. So I would. I want to know if there's an appetite for preserving that use for transit. Facilities uh, as opposed to a broad one.
Not sure if I'm understanding that. You want a thumbs up or thumbs down on?
I I don't, yeah, I don't know if you could phrase it like, is uh, would would? Would the commission be, maybe the question would be a a quick thumbs up, thumbs down on whether the commission would be interested in. Exploring, uh. Uh, you know, some sort of compromise where we look at transit for ADA purposes. Um, as a starting point of a conversation as opposed to just broad transit. But I think you have to ask for thumbs, Michael. I don't know if you're willing.
I think there was a reticence at the outset of this meeting to vote on things. Um, I understand your point, and I think it's well-made, but I don't. Um, I think it's, it's better to have planted that seed than necessarily to get people to commit to it. Carolyn.
I think that the, you know, the ADA accessibility to parks is a good thing to consider while we're talking about this particular matter of transit, because that's how some people with disabilities would get to go to parks. There are different kinds of buses. I think we're, maybe some of you are like me, we're thinking about giant, giant buses, but there's also very small buses, you know, that, um, I guess, I think that comes under the definition of transit too. So by saying no transit, it would seem that we would be placing some limitations on some creative solutions for some people that need it. Um, I noticed the PRC, their point seems to be to change this to limiting transit stops to only temporary stops. I don't think really that's the point as to whether it's temporary or not. I think, I think the bigger issue is that we're talking about is, you know, whether to allow it at all. I'm kind of open to some form of it. Don't know quite how to put it.
Okay, any further discussion on, uh, number seven? Angie?
Well, I think the only pitch I would also make is, um, as a parent who has kids in sports. Um, you know, I do appreciate when my kids have more direct access to transit and can use it to get to and from. Now, I know, I'm sure there's lots of folks who can bring up examples of kids not using public transit, but you know, I do think having public transit serve places that people want to go, and if parks are places that we want to go. Um, a- and it also helps address parking problems. Uh, you know, there's a, there's a piece about, I think transit is an important component to public access. Um, a- and I also think it helps take pressure off of some other things. I, I don't support our parks being stopover, layover, uh, maintenance facilities, um, I, but I do think parks get to be a place that people have increased and better access to, and to the extent that those things merge, um, I think is important.
Great.
Just adding, uh, one final sense about access, I'm thinking of like school kids as well. A lot of our parks, um, access points are not designed for school buses. Um, and yeah, appreciating not wanting to have giant layovers and whatnot. Um, just the ability to get kids in our school district on field trips into parks. It really doesn't happen all that often because they are not accessible. Um, yeah, just that's my two, other two cents.
Victor.
Just responding to Commissioner Batazzo's comment, comment. I'm not, uh, I'm not arguing against, and and I think others aren't arguing against transit. Um, yeah, I'm all for transit, gay transit. Transit usually involves a bus, either big or small, as, as Commissioner Bostman pointed out. These things run on roads. And that's where transit stops are. They're on roads. They're not in the parks. And that's, that's what we're arguing against here is transit within the parks themselves. I don't think it belongs there. And and with the exception of, uh, well, with, with no exception, I, I can't, I can't think of a park that doesn't have a road running in front of it, so I'm, I'm not. I'm, I'm not quite sure. I, I, I'm not, I'm not quite sure I follow the, the transit argument. Transit runs on roads. Transit stops are on roads and public right-of-ways. And pub, and all of those exist in, in front of our parks.
Yeah, I, I think the point being made is not in all those parks is access from the roads, uh, easy for disabled people or, you know, or elderly or whatever.
But the, but that's a different point, and I think that's a point that Kate is making.
Yes.
There's an accessibility point. That's not a transit stop. The language that we're talking about here is transit stop. There, and and Kate rightly raised, there's an accessibility issue, and that's a completely separate thing, but that's not what we're discussing here.
Uh, yeah, I believe they overlap, um, Victor, because it's not either or. Uh, in some cases, it is either or, but there are some that, that that issue overlaps. So I think that's the point being made. Uh, Carolyn.
Well, I was just thinking that, you know, transit for disabled is probably custom, small, can just drive into a park and drop somebody off. They don't need a transit stop for that, so, you know, maybe that's not needed.
My hand is not up. Do the top.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion of transit stops? Seeing none, we'll move on to signage, number eight. Adam.
Um, referring once again back to my written comments, I mean, I've seen habitat restoration signs in our parks. Um, I like that. I see those signs in residential warning us about invasive knotweed, yes. Um, but when I go look at the PI zone, um, or when I look at residential zones, I don't see signs. Um, so I fail to see why that should be included as a use in our park zone.
Carolyn.
I want to ask Adam, you know, this makes me nervous when I remember when we worked on the sign code a few years ago. And how the federal law is requiring us to be kind of more accommodating signs. And I'm more concerned about people being able to put up signs that are otherwise allowed on public property, like advertising their business or their political view or whatever. So what, how do, how do those type of signs relate to this use that is listed as being allowed in parks?
There are some signs that the city has, um, that there are limits in what the city can regulate in terms of signs, because there are some signs that are First Amendment protected speech. Um, but I, I can't get into the, the finer detail than that, um, but you're right to bring up that, um, that point in terms of.
I can speak to that a little since I was the one that worked on the sign code previously. Um, I believe our parks code, the, the code that operates, um, activities within parks rather than land uses, um, already uh, limits signs in parks to those either placed by the city or those, um, allowed as a part of a special event permit. Like, for example, when there's art installations or more like free speech-related signs, um, like say for like a Black Lives Matter event or something like that. Um, they go through that special events permit process to do that installation. Um, and commercial signs or other non-permitted signs are not allowed in parks.
Thanks. So that's like in another part of code. Aside from this, it's in the sign code? Is that where you find that?
No, it's in the parks code, which I don't recall the exact number.
Mm-hmm.
We can, we can let you know that, um, I believe it's Title Six, but I'll need to confirm.
Okay. Okay, well, maybe we could make sure that those two sections are in agreement, or that at least we understand that they're in agreement. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions on signage? Move on to number nine. Large wireless communications facilities. Adam.
Um, once again, I would advocate, um, and I think shares, yeah, I, 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 I would agree with the PRC input here. Scratch this from the list. Um, by adding it, we're encouraging and allowing large WCFs. Um, looking at my notes, nineteen oh six oh seventy already permits small wireless facilities in our, well, quote, are permitted in all zoning designations. Uh, and I, I've seen it with utilities, um, you know, these are, I've seen it as easements, like, you know, those have value to companies. And you build one, and then the next one comes along saying, oh, there's already um, a wireless communication facility, so that's a justification to build another. Um, so this is opening a Pandora's box. Let's not allow the large WCFs, and we already allow the small ones um, per, you know, by law and per city code. So I agree with log number nine. Let's remove it.
Victor.
Plus one to the vice chair's comments and a question for Adam Zach. Um, do we have any large wireless communications facilities in parks currently?
Um, and Alison, you might be able to bet.
We do, um. I'm trying to recall the exact locations, but I believe Island Crest Park has one and perhaps another location as well.
Yep. Thanks.
Great.
Yeah, this is a question. I'm wondering if staff can share more about the origin of this on the list, um. And one of the reasons I'm asking is because, um, just watching the, uh, neighborhood comments on Nextdoor and whatnot, neighbors seem to be adamantly opposed to having these types of facilities in residential areas. Um, but there also seems to be a demand to fill the gaps, and, uh, you know, phones drop out here and there, so I feel like there might be something going on here where residents are asking for things that are in opposition to each other, which I'm sure city staff have never experienced before. Um, so, like, what, why did staff propose this? And if it is a need and a demand from the residents to have better wifi service, what are the options for filling it? Um, is it? Because I know that residential is not desirable to a lot of, of residents. Um, so if not residential and if not parks, what are we left with? Is it just commercial places and are those adequate to fill the gaps, um, in coverage that residents are demanding? So I'm just, I'm wondering what is the origin of this statement? Um, and if we take it out of here, where do those facilities that residents are demanding live?
Well, so I, on the first part of that question, um, this draft was prepared as a way to, um, a- as kind of the starting point for this conversation with the planning commission. Um, and so as we were preparing the draft, and we were reviewing it with other, um, city departments, and we had to go through legal review, we wanted to get a starting point that was, um, a proposal that was, you know, legally acceptable and then also, um, addressed some of those foreseen things that may need to happen in parks. With the, with the recognition that this was going to go through, um, this review process and a refinement process with, um, with the planning commission. Um, so that's, that's where this draft kind of came from. That was the perspective within which it was written. Um, it, I think that that is, that your question about service areas and what kind of services may be provided, I think, is uh, one of the trade-offs that we'll have with most of these um, uses is, you know, if we don't, if we prohibit this use in a city park, that then means that that use would not be allowed there, and so that's one less place that it may be allowed. So I think that's part of the trade-off. I can't necessarily answer where, um, would be the appropriate place for it at, at this moment. But I hope that helped.
Carolyn.
I admit to being possibly a little confused. I thought we, that the wireless facilities have to be allowed in all of the zones in the city, and that that's the federal law. And I thought I understood that it was both large and small wireless facilities. Am I correct in that?
Uh, Alison, um, do you, because you, uh, sorry.
Yeah, I, we're gonna have to consult with legal counsel for a definitive answer on this. It is, that is correct for small wireless facilities. I don't know the law about the larger macro facilities as well. So I will need to consult with our legal coun- counsel about that. Um, for the, for the small facilities, we have virtually no control over where they're placed. It's all based on the needs of the carriers for coverage.
Okay, so once we figure, once we find that out and, and find out, you know, what is actually required to be allowed in parks. Um, then my next question is, do we have to state that in this regulation in order to be consistent? I mean, not that it makes a whole lot of difference, but are we, do we have to put it in this list? It to be legal, to be consistent?
Again, we should consult with legal counsel on that. It, it may be possible to remove it from this, this list, given that it's covered in another section of the code.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any further comments or questions on wireless? Okay, number ten. That one does not appear to be very controversial. Any comments on ten?
Uh, just need a minute.
Can you share a screen then on my phone for this call, and it's a tiny little, I can't toggle between you all in the.
Sorry, Kate, were you asking me to stop sharing my screen?
Oh, are you sharing? I, I just see.
Hi.
I, for some reason on my device, I'm just seeing people, not your screen share. Now, maybe I pushed the wrong button here. Okay, got it. Thank you. Sorry.
Angie.
Uh, I think that this one is one I, I, I mean, I'll just say, I'm looking forward to talking to the Parks and Rec Committee. I think when anybody, as it relates to land management, starts talking about uses, um, we do tend to focus on, like, how are humans going to use the space? Or how are we going to use the space? And I scratched my head a little bit about, you know, if the space is managed for conservation, for example. Do you, do, is it really necessary to define those conservation actions or activities within the use? Or is that considered consistent with managing the space? I mean, we don't get hyper-specific about how parks maintains their parks in the codes. Um, like, some of that detail, uh, you know, I, I think comes from the actual management of. So I'm, I am curious about why we think we need to call out natural systems improvements. In some ways, it, it almost makes it sound like if we have to call it out, then it's more of a hobby than a purpose. Or it's more of a hobby that, like, that we're treating it like it's some kind of recreational use as opposed to uh, you know, that needs definition as opposed to recognizing a, a conservation purpose for the land. So I, I, it's a, something I want to ask how or why they're looking at it that way.
Carolyn.
Yeah, I have similar comments. So, uh, it seems like the purpose of the regulations are to, um, you know, identify a new zone, define, uh, what the uses are that are allowed, and then the development standards associated with the uses. So it seems like, it's not about, this is, this is, it's about development. So I'm not quite sure why we need to define what non-development is. And if we did try to define non-development, we might find ourselves a little bit hard coming up with a definition that accommodates all of the wonderful non-development things that go on in natural areas. So I'm not quite sure it's needed, but, uh, yeah, because it, conservation, I don't consider a use, you know.
Okay. Number eleven, building height. We've already touched on this a few. Number eleven, building height. We've already touched on this a few times, but um. Here it is. Any additional thoughts or comments on it? Carolyn.
I would like to uh, talk to PRC about, you know, the idea that we have or that maybe they had too. About the matrix, you know, kind of like. If we're concerned about maximum building height. And we're worried about things that are non-conforming, you know, having problems in the future. This is one of those things that we might address with a matrix of different standards for different parks. We'll just see if the PRC is into that. Maybe they, maybe they like that idea.
Chris.
Yeah, I, I, I think I don't understand the problem with them non-conforming use. I mean, if we had a, you know, a twenty foot, twenty four foot building height. You know, how, how does that create a problem with the existing uh, buildings at uh. At Luther Burbank. I mean, why, I, what I understood you to say is that simply that, you know, when, when they come down, they go up, smaller buildings go up instead of them. I mean, is that all there is to it or is it creates some ongoing problem?
Um, so when a, when a use is non-conforming or a structure is non-conforming. Um, just kind of generally, the code is designed to replace that non-conforming user structure. With a conforming user structure. And where that gets into or where that can create friction is in. Improving those existing non-conforming structures. Um, so things like. If you needed to do some kind of exterior work to, for a seismic retrofit or something like that. It could create, it, there is the potential to create some friction. Because of the non-conforming code is kind of designed to constrain. Non-conforming uses and non, non-conforming structures. Um, so that's the. It, in general, you are, you hesitate to create. When you create a non-conformity or when you make something non-conforming, the idea is that that thing is gonna go away eventually. Um, and so that's the, the concern is that we don't wanna be planning for. Existing structures to kind of go away or change significantly. That's, that's the implication of non-conformity.
Victor.
So it's possible to deal with non-conforming buildings through either exception, which I think somewhere, somewhere in the documents that were sent out. We, we have a number of exceptions that we call out. Or just grandfather them and, and just call out the, the fact that. We acknowledge the fact that there are these buildings and, and they're above uh, above the, the maximum height limit.
There's, there's a couple of, yeah, there are a couple of different ways that you could get at that. Um, you know, the, the tiered approach as well, um, that has been talked about tonight would be another way that the planning commission could say. In parks of this size with these services that fit into this tier. Structures may be this, this tall. Yeah, or existing but structures.
Some, I, I would encourage us as we come up with a second draft of this. To look at those options, because again, this, this seems like a very broad option that I think is um. Unnecessary. Um, especially since what we're trying to do is accommodate existing buildings. And so I think there's a number of ways that we can address that issue. Whether it's grandfathering by, by exception or, you know, this tiered issue. But rather than having a blanket statement that says, hey, we're gonna allow buildings with a maximum height of thirty six feet or three stories. In our parks, which include a lot of smaller parks. Um, I think, I think that's a more rational approach.
Um, I'll, I'll echo Victor's comments there. Like I would, I would lean towards, yeah. Making exceptions for existing ones. I'm also a little confused by the verbal. Answer to the non-conforming, like I'm looking at nineteen oh one oh fifty on my other screen and. You know, this, it's titled non-conforming structures. It says, the purpose of this section is to allow for the continuance and maintenance of legally established. Non-conforming structures, not to drive them to be rebuilt. And then looking at uh, section B one, I see ordinary repairs and maintenance of legally non-conforming structure. Are permitted. In no event may any repair or maintenance result in the expansion of any existing non-conformity. Or the creation of any new non-conformity. So I read that as, okay, let's say we set the limit at twenty four feet. An existing building is thirty six. Yeah, it's non-conforming if we don't go the route of accepting it. Now, you can, you can repair it, you can fix it, you can update it, but you can't build it higher, right? That would be the. Expansion of any existing non-conformity. Um, so I'm, I'm a little confused there. I, I, I'm just, I'm just, just reading the code, sounds like it's trying to keep them there and just prevent someone from. Increasing the degree to which it is non-conforming. Not driving.
Sorry, Alison, you wanna address that?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on that. I mean, I think those provisions could really limit the ability to renovate buildings in the future. Like, for example, that Luther Burbank admin building is completely non-accessible. It does not have an elevator. It does not have accessible bathrooms. If the city wanted to add those facilities at some point in the future, it would likely require. A small expansion of the building, like a bump out. Um, which likely would be prohibited by this non-conforming code.
Adam, I think point Alison is making is that the um. The non-conformity may be height. But it renders the building non-conforming and it will affect the ability to do other things, not just increase the height.
Correct.
Did you have another comment, Adam?
I, I would just say, yeah, could, would it be possible if, if we're all, if. You know, when, when the city goes back and looks at stuff, if we could get some clarification on nineteen oh one oh fifty Bravo one. Just to, you know, ma- maybe I'm reading it wrong. Yeah, cause I'm, I'm not a lawyer.
Okay, any other thoughts on building height that haven't already been said? Okay, let's move to twelve. Impervious surface. We've had quite a bit of discussion on this already. Uh, Carolyn, sounds like you have something new.
Yeah, I, I think that the impervious uh, surface standard in the development standards as drafted is, is quite good. Um, it's exempting uh, emergency vehicle lanes, public trails and synthetic turf athletic fields. But I see that the PRC is looking for a little more flexibility. Um, but still maintaining a high bar for increasing totally imperfect surf, total impervious surface. I can agree with that. I agree with their, their initiative there. I think the staff has given us a couple of good. Uh, or at least one good option to add. Now, of those three approaches that are listed there, the first one is just what you already have in the draft and I think that's good. I think the second one would be problematic, capping impervious surface as a percent of the total lot size. I mean, parks are just these sprawling, you know, things and I don't think trying to. Uh, set a level of impervious surface associated with the size of the park is the way to go. And some parks are more recreational. And others are more passive and um, you know, open space. So I would skip the, the second um, option. But the third one, I think is a good thing to add to the draft code. It would um, allow, it would exempt some very trivial development so that. Um, you wouldn't have to do a park master plan for some very trivial thing like a shed or a, a tiny building or something like that. So I, I'm in favor of adding number three, that concept to the draft standard.
Per previous comment, I'm really concerned about stormwater control. Um, and I think. Any statements about impervious are meant to address um, aesthetics as well as stormwater control. Um, and I think folks' motivations for impervious are um, highly variable in the community. Um, so I would hope that we'd figure out a way to um. Kind of parse that issue a little bit and figure out how to deal with it. Little more accurately based on the, the different values that people are coming to this conversation with. Um, from the stormwater point of view. I think, I think we have a, a, a bigger fish to fry or at least an equally big fish to fry in um. And again, that, that lack, you know, the massive amount of lawn we have and, and the difference in the ability of um. Forest lawns and pavement to um, prevent uh, stormwater pollutants like the six PPD. Quinine, which we now know kills salmon, um, and uh, other chemicals. Um, so for me, this is a, this is a stormwater problem. And whether it's dealt within this part of the code or a different part of the code, I appreciate uh. Commissioner Betazoo's statement that, you know, this has gotta go somewhere, whether it's here or not, you know, maybe staff could offer some options at our next meeting. Uh, about where the topic of impervious surfaces for stormwater control belongs. You know, do we nod to it here or in uh, stormwater master program or whatnot? Is staff able to um, address that and provide options for the next time we get together?
Yeah, I think uh. What may be helpful is to point out where we have existing. Uh, right, because we have a pretty uh, robust existing stormwater management. Program that's consistent with state and county regulations. So there's, there's a lot more to it than just impervious surface for that stormwater management piece. So I'll, I'll definitely provide some information about where that's located and, and what.
Um, thank you. What, what it doesn't address is, um, I guess I'm saying this doesn't go far enough. It do, it doesn't address that our, I don't think our stormwater code or our parks planning process generally um. Calls for the increase in um. Um, high infiltration capacity uh, landscape types. Ones that offer uh, a lot of um, evaporation, any vapor transpiration and um, better infiltration. Especially considering the very poor soils and how those impact stormwater. Thanks.
Chris.
Yeah, I'm sort of curious. I mean, is there some, some, is there any data? That uh, Adam, that helps us see where there are stormwater problems on the island? I guess I'm just trying to figure out, I would have always assumed that the parks were. The one place on the island that had the least stormwater problem. And I, I didn't really appreciate the fields issue. Um, as I've learned a little bit more about it today, but I just wondered if we, is there a reason to think that the, the parks are. Sort of at a deficit in terms of their absorption of stormwater compared to other, other places on the island?
I will send out some resources. Um, it, it has to do with infiltration values. Um, and that has to do with how much water um, getting from the streets, you know. Where is it going? How's it getting into the, the lake um, without being treated properly? And lawn is um. Depending on what tables you're looking at, there's manings and values, there's all kinds of different values uh, in different hydraulic and, or sorry, hydrologic models. But the upshot is that, you know, lawn is somewhere in between paved surface and a forest. But I'll, I'll send resources for those, so um.
Yeah, I got that. I, I just asking Adam if there was something on the island that, you know, in, in their data showed that there was a problem in parks or parks were good. Or is there anything that indicates where our stormwater problems are to the extent we have?
Um, I, I can take a look before the February meeting and see what, see what we have available.
Carolyn. Oh, you're on mute.
I'm in favor of doing away with lawn wherever it's not needed for many reasons, including surface water runoff. There's a lot of research documenting all of the environmental death detriment associated with. Uh, coverage of the earth with, with grass, with, with lawns. However, um, I guess what I wanted to ask, you know, our mission here is to comment on development regulations for. For park zone and, you know, what's allowed and what development standards are appropriate. I wanted to ask staff, do we have direction in the pros plan? And, and in fact, does the pros plan direct the park zone? The park zone is going to be a part of the comprehensive plan. And the pros plan is a functional plan, which is the boss. And so that's one question, which is the boss? And the second is, is there already? A policy in the pros plan to begin to. Reduce the amount of our parks land in lawn that is not needed. We, we could use to know that, the answer to that.
Okay, um, I will address the policy question. I, I don't know the pros plan. Chapter inverse, but in terms of, so I can address that in the memo. But I think that there's the, that question about how this fits within the comp plan. So there's, the comprehensive plan is the overarching plan for the city of which. The pros plan should be consistent with and is more specific. And then the, the policies of both the comp plan and the pros plan. Should be implemented through our development regulations. So the development regulations implement the comprehensive plan. And the other components of the comprehensive plan. Um, so when we were putting this draft together, we were consider, we were referring back to the pros plan. To make sure that it was consistent with those policies. Um, and that would be part of the process of moving forward.
One follow up if I may, Mike?
Sure.
Okay, so that brings me back to the realization that. We're putting together a park zone and we're looking at it from the standpoint of regulations, right? This is not policy, is it? Right? So where would, where would we put up if we wanted to take action on this question of how much lawn we have that's not being used in parks? Do we have a policy activity going on associated with this park zone?
So if uh, if there was a policy, if you want to adopt a policy. Addressing that, that would be appropriate to place in the land use element. Um, if we're talking about the use of parks, land use um, would be a logical place. To my knowledge, there is not a policy in the land use element that addresses the quantity of field in parks. Uh, but we could. That is, that is a policy that could be adopted.
Thanks for food for thought. Thank you.
So I, I, I have one comment on this, item twelve. Um, that first option uh, or possible approach to incorporate flexibility. Talks about expanding the list of exempt use, uses. Uh, playgrounds i- is the example given. Um, but there's been a lot of discussions tonight about access and need for. Um, potentially more parking in parks that are used for more active. Recreation. Um, and even some of the ones for passive recreation have very limited. Parking available to them, um, you know, usually along the street. Um, I think that that's one of the trade offs that we have to be careful of with. With this issue of no net loss or no more impervious surface. Because uh, as we, as we generate uses in these parks, especially for active recreation. The people need to park somewhere. Um, and uh, so we need to be mindful of that in, in this. List of exempt uses or developments going forward. Adam.
Um, yeah, on the, on the growing, the parking topic, I mean, I, I. I, I like the point that Commissioner Q's brought up about six Papa Delta. Papa Papa Delta quinine, that's a compound in, that stabilizes rubber. Uh, which is used in car tires and bus tires. So if we, if we try to expand the parking in the parks, we're, we're bringing more of that to the island presumably. Cause our parks are amazing, right? People are gonna come from the eye, from perhaps further from Lake Washington. Uh, to come, you know, to our parks, bringing it into what will eventually drain into there. So I think, yeah, let's. You know, there, there's the uses, but I, I appreciate Commissioner Q's bringing the science into this too. And if we grow those parking lots. Um, I'm also hearing that parking lots are less, are, are, are. Have, you know, they, they absorb less than open grass, which of course absorbs less than tree canopy, um. Is, is growing our parking beyond the, beyond this, this, the residents desires and the, the look of those. Is it, is it good science to encourage more cars to come to the island and bring their pollutants into our parks?
Any further thoughts on number twelve? Okay, on to thirteen, lighting. We've talked about this a little bit already, um, any further thoughts on that? Carolyn.
Uh, I was just finding it in my documents here. Just, just, just one second. Maybe somebody else wants to go first. No? Okay, just a second.
Uh, Adam Zach, um, do you, you know, I know, I know we have pretty extensive lighting. Um. On Island Press, on the Island Press Way Park with the ballfields there. And that gets a lot of use at night and then same at the middle school, um. Do we have any, any other? Parks that have extensive lighting like that to permit outdoor activities?
The high school.
Yeah, oh, the high school, of course, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the only example, the only other place with the, that kind of lighting.
Does the park commission or, you know. Does the city overall envision developing more active recreation? Facilities that allow for night activities in the future that we have to be cognizant of. I mean, you know, it's been, uh, twenty years or, uh, yeah, twenty years since I coached my daughter's. Soccer team, but even at that point, there was a dearth of adequate spaces and, you know. Uh. And, you know, to, to have practices or have games and at, at night. So, you know, I'm curious as to whether there's any appetite in the city to expand. Facilities that would be well lit like those three are.
I, I think that would be a good question for park staff at the P R C meeting on February eighth.
Carolyn.
I tend to agree with what the P R C's input is here, um. I have not noticed the city. I, I, I'm thinking there might need to be a standard, additional standard. Well, let me think. We already have the one lighting standard that's. That's proposed. Now, is it sufficient or not? I'm thinking that it might not be sufficient and might need improvement. For example, um, I haven't noticed that the city is installing. Lighting fixtures at athletic fields that again direct the light down. Rather than into the eyes of passing motorists or pedestrians walking by. Also, don't, um, I'm not sure now, getting beyond athletic fields which need very bright lights. I'm also not seeing that the city is seeking the right lumens for the job. I'm seeing exceedingly white, bright light now, which is sort of all the rage. Uh, being installed and not directed. So, um, anyway, we, we might need, I think there might be some case for. Some improvement on that.
Okay, on to fourteen, any thoughts on fourteen?
Victor. Uh, just a question, is this, uh, covered by the design commission? Would this, would, would this be something that the design commission works on?
Uh, um, it would depend on the design standards that were established, um. So if we were to create a process where the design commission needed to review those designs to, um.
Yeah.
Resume a, re- review a proposal for consistency with, um, but that would. It, it would depend on how we structured those design standards.
How was it done for the town center? Was it the, the, the design commission?
Yes, yeah, in general, the town center development in the town center, um, that meets the thresholds in the code would have to be. Reviewed by the design commission. Um, yeah.
Carolyn.
Well, I, I was going to say that I didn't think that design standards would be needed for the park zone, um. Given the city's review progress, pro- um, process already. So I guess. I'm not, I'm not so sure I agree with the P R C on, on that particular. Uh, point.
Okay. Any further thoughts on fourteen?
One question for, uh, Adam Zach, um. It says in your explanation regarding number fourteen that. The city already undertakes public review of design for many capital improvement projects. Could you just clarify what that means by many, um, you know, which ones would and which ones wouldn't?
Yeah, there's a, I don't know the exact threshold, but, um, a lot of. Capital improvements go through a process where their design is reviewed, um. Publicly with the city council in advance of, uh, moving forward on that project. A good example would be the recent, um, bike skills area that was reviewed, um. By the city council, um, in the last year, um, so there were several iterations of the design of that. Um, facility before it was eventually, uh, moved through the process. So we, many capital improvements go through that.
Okay, thank you. I think that's probably sufficient.
Uh, fifteen, any comments? Victor.
Do we have a definition of what development is? Because I think earlier in our conversation, i- i- in fact, at the beginning of our conversation, when I asked about it, it was. It could have been building a playground or something like that. I think. I think it would be useful here to get very, very specific on what we mean about development when we say development.
Um, development is defined in the code in chapter nineteen sixteen zero one zero in the D definitions. Um, it is a piece of land that contains building structures and other modifications to the natural environment or. The alteration of the natural environment through the construction or our exterior alteration of any building or structure. Whether above or below ground or water, and any grading, filling, dredging, draining, channelizing, cutting, topping, or excavation associated. With such construction or modification, the placing of permanent or temporary obstructions that interfere with the normal public use of the waters. And land subject to this code and, and the division of land into two or more parcels. And the adjustment of property lines between parcels.
That's crazy broad.
Yeah. Uh, Carolyn.
I don't think I agree with P R C on this one, uh, given that there's so many restrictions already that are incorporated in this package to. On development and the limitations based on impervious surface. I don't think going the other way and saying, well, here's the maximum you can do is really a worthwhile exercise.
Okay. Uh, seeing no further hands, uh, we're on to the last one. Number sixteen. We've touched on this already. Are there any further comments about this? Carolyn.
Um, I don't understand again, um. Are these areas in the new zone? I, I mean, maybe I look at the map, but I, uh, didn't have one printed, but, um. Are they in the new zone and subject to the same regulations, say like Pioneer Park?
These are proposed to be zoned, uh, parks under the proposal, the, these two open spaces.
Do the existing limitations in the open space conservancy, I presume there's an ordinance or a section of code governing that. Does that section supersede anything that's going to be in the park zone?
Um, so the management of those pro- properties, um, is. The Open Space Conservancy Trust oversees those, um, properties and the management of those properties, um. I think that the new development regulations would. Um, they would, they would apply there. And so anything, any of the management would be subject to those development standards. Sorry, that's a really. Kind of general answer, but that's all the.
That's good, that's, that's good. Thank you. I, I think I understand. I mean, I understand the impact there.
Angie.
Um, I, I think this is one, you know, when they say, consider how this zone relates to the Open Space Conservancy Trust. That's such a. Non-specific, uh, very difficult. Like if I received that comment, I'm just not sure how I would like. It, it needs more specificity on what they mean by consider how it relates. Like, is that just answering an informational question or are we trying to make these? Are we trying to relate these spaces? Um, so I, I'd be curious to dig in further on that to see what they actually mean. Like, what are we really trying to get at? Um, I think I do just want a point of clarification from Adam. If I'm looking at the land use map. Um, the on, is the only open space not included in the parks? The I ninety?
Um, on the land use map, yes.
So I, the I ninety strip is the only strip not included in the parks zone?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay. I, I think that's actually an important distinction that then again lends to some of the things I was pointing to about what we're actually able. To zone and make rules on and what we're not and why.
Carolyn, is that a new hand?
Yes. You know, I just noticed something on this, um, land use map. It's again, it's a little bit of a problem with the colors. But there is a item in the key called open space, and if you look at Pioneer Park. The Engstrom property on the far east side that juts out, that's a different color. From the park, but it's still, okay. So, oh, well, maybe it doesn't make any difference. It looks like you're including something called open space. In the park zone as well. And then there's that other. Looks like another open space parcel, uh, you know, a quarter of a mile to the north of Pioneer Park. I don't know what that is. But I think, I think it would really help to get some colors corrected on this map because I, I don't know what's going where here. Uh, but I guess doesn't really matter. They're open space and they're still going into the park zone. Okay, thanks. Answered my own question.
Okay, Adam.
Yeah, oh, oh, I think I said at the beginning, but yeah, I, I have some difficulties with the colors on that, uh. Land use map. So if there's any way that could be clarified or patterned, um, that would be appreciated. Um. And I've got two other questions, but would be after, uh, discussion of number sixteen, if allowed.
Uh, I think we're done with sixteen, so if you have another question or comment.
Sure, um, yeah, one, one thing I'd like to at least bring up to the commission, um. It's a real, this first one's tiny and the other one's really big. So I'll start with the small one. Um, the definition of agricultural activities, um, I, I love walking through the pea patches. Up by Luther Burbank, um, little concerned to see the production of animals included in there. Um, smell, noise concerns, um, you know, larger animals need structures. Um, so would just like to throw that out there for other commissioners to think about. You know, what, what do they think about it in their comments? I would, I would advocate that we, uh, scrap animals from the definition of agricultural activities. Um, and then the other big one, there was some public comment about. You know, you know, we're talking about what to include into the park zone. Um, I thought, I think there's a pretty good public comment about. What it would take to get something out of the park zone and heightening the standard for that, um, would like to hear some. Some thoughts from other commissioners, uh, because, you know, once we call something a park. There's, it, it seems like there is, you know, there, there will always be pressure to. You know, turn it into something else, um. So how can we, yeah, I'd like to hear what other commissioners think about. Once we've said something's a park, how do we keep it a park?
Adam, I, I'm not sure if I understand that. Are you saying? How do we keep it a park or how do we keep it undeveloped into, say, active recreation from passive recreation?
Uh.
But very important things.
Uh, ma- may I?
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would say, how do we, like, once some, to, to clarify, once something is zoned park. How do we ensure that it remains zoned park? Um, I don't see here any hype, you know, high standard to prevent. Rezoning and I thought that was a, I thought that was an interesting point raised in the public comments.
Okay, so your, your concern is with potential rezones?
Yeah, I would, I, I, I liked the idea of trying to define a heightened standard for unparking a park. From a zoning perspective.
Okay. Kate.
Um, I, I think the city is always going to retain its right to, uh. It's one of its inherent rights to determine zoning and, uh, modify zoning. It's why we have these comp plan processes, but I. I think in the spirit of the comment, like, um, I think a tiered system. Like I think advocating for a tiered system, um, and I think we're all going to have to be flexible in that, in that, um. You know, if you, if you have a tiered system whereby you say this is meant for forested natural area, um. And, and offer some pretty strict, um, guidance on that and possibly some aspirational goals on that, um. You know, I think, I think it's less likely that. It's going to be turned into something completely random. Whereas if you say this is something that has. Active use or this is something where there are already some city, active city buildings and functions. You know, really just defining those tiers and being really explicit, uh, about what the purpose of each tier is. And having some, um, you know, not excessive, but a few sideboards on what would be considered in and out of that. Um. You know, it gives the city, uh, and the commissioners, the parks commission, it gives everyone the flexibility to consider trade-offs. And, um, and to negotiate what, what we think is desired now and in the, in the future. Um, not everyone's going to get everything they want. If they do that, it is a more complicated process, um. But I, I, I think it gives us a venue by which we can consider trade-offs and possibly. Build some of that trust that's, um, but, but that doesn't mean that everyone gets everything they want. There's some pretty, um. Hardline statements being made about, um, you know, everything has to be this or that or the other, you know, um. Everything can't be everything to. Everyone all the time and everyone's happy, you know, we, we do have to have some trade-offs and I think the tiered system does give us that flexibility. Um, and I think it also would make it a little more durable, which I think was, um. Commissioner Rick Ebb's, you know, question is how do we make this durable? And I think we make it durable by, by having discrete tiers.
Carolyn, you have another comment?
Yeah, um, Adam, why does the. Definition of agricultural activities, I presume you're trying to get at pea patches? Is that what this is about? Do we need a definition for agricultural activities, one? And if we do need a definition for agricultural activities in order to allow a pea patch. Or for the city to, for example, um, do their stewardship work and, and some of their propagation, their plant propagation or, or something. Why, why would animals be added? Why, why would animals be added there? Are you just trying to be consistent with some other definition, some other place?
Sure, uh, so. The first part of your question is, we would need to, if we're going to allow agricultural uses in our parks. It's helpful to have a definition of that use, um, it's how it's in the code.
Okay.
Um. For the proposed definitions, I used the APA, the American Planning Association. Uh, Planters Dictionary as a reference and mostly drew from that. Um, rather than reinvent the wheel and create uh from whole cloth. If, if. I. I wasn't, I, it didn't occur to me that, uh, that. Raising livestock would be thought of as a potential thing that happened in city parks, so.
Bunnies.
We could take out, is, is taking out animals from the definition probably doesn't really affect things.
Okay.
I mean, there is, when we're establishing these definitions and it, it came up in the matrix too, I think it's important to remember that. Um, if, if we name a use and establish a definition for it. And then we say agricultural uses in another zone, just to use that as an example. Then that, that other zone would also be subject to these definitions. So in general, that's why the proposed definitions are fairly broad. Because it, thinking about this as things that may apply in other zones in the future at some point. But we can narrow them down. That's part of what the planning commission is. Is here to do, right, is to refine the proposal.
Okay, I could see the usefulness of having it be um applicable to other zones, but, okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we've gotten through it. Adam, thank you very much for your presentation and for fielding a lot of difficult questions. Um, it's, we've got a lot of things to cover in our. PRC meeting on the eighth, hopefully, uh. You've kept track of that as, as well as you could. Um, so, but thank you very much. That was, um. Illuminating, uh, and uh, I think we had a good discussion. Uh, there are clearly differences of opinion and there has. Kate's pointed out, not everyone's gonna get their own way. Um, and we're gonna have to strike some. Reasonable compromises and uh, we may have to go down a different path with a tiered approach. Uh, or some variation on that, but uh. But let's get to it. And again, thank you for that. So, uh, move on to other business, uh, Allison, is there a deputy director report?
Just very briefly, I know we're all getting tired, um. We are working on a schedule for. Say, the next six months or so of work for the commission. Um, we talked a little bit earlier in the meeting about. You know, what's coming up in the next couple of months for this park zone, um, kind of simultaneous to that work. Um, the housing work group is going to be reconvening and meeting several times. And then the culmination of that will be their recommendation of a draft housing element will come back to the commission. Sometime around March, um. And then we're gonna be working out kind of the details of what happens from there. It's very likely that we're gonna need to add some special meetings. In March and April and perhaps beyond that. Um, and so we'll need to have some talks about how to schedule those and the preferred dates and that sort of thing. I think. Our plan is to work with the chair and vice chair to get um some initial. Thoughts together on that in terms of our proposal and then check in with the rest of you about availability, um, prior to finalizing the schedule. So you'll be hearing more about that here soon. I just wanted to, I think I. Talked with most of you about this in our one-on-ones, but, um, you know, there are, there is going to be a need for extra meetings coming up here later this year and. And we'll, we'll continue that conversation.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any planned absences for future meetings?
No.
Okay, that's good. Okay. The next regular meeting is scheduled for uh Wednesday, February twenty eighth at six P M. We have our special meeting with the uh PRC on the eighth. Um, and so there being no other business to come before the planning commission. Time is now nine thirty-nine P M and the meeting is adjourned. As a reminder, please stay seated until the, and on screen until the city staff has terminated the broadcast. Good evening and thank you for joining us and uh, call it a night.